Good evening, everybody. So our agenda is right over there. And the second slot is speaker slip with pens on the third slot. Once you've completed, please return it back to me and then we'll line you up for speaking. And if you're going to be speaking tonight, please make sure that you adjust your mic so that we want to have it first and then speak directly into the mic so you can hear me. Okay? Thank you, everyone.
Welcome to the February 11th, 2025, Millbury City Council Meeting.
Recording in progress.
Let me try that again. Welcome to the February 11th, 2025, Millbury City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Present.
Mayor Feng?
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
Thank you very much. And please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance for those who are able. Thank you, and peace be seated. We will begin tonight's meeting with the ceremonial presentation and proclaiming that February 2025 as Black History Month. And the proclamation from City of Millbury, whereas the Black History Month is celebrated each February all across the United States and was founded in 1995 by Dr. Carter Woodson, an African-American historian, author, and journalist. Whereas Dr. Woodson realized the importance of providing a theme to focus the public's attention, the intention has never been to dictate or limit the explorations of the Black experience but to bring important developments to the public's attention that merits emphasis. And whereas the 2025 Black History Month theme, African-Americans and Labor, is a powerful reflection on the pivotal role that the hard work of African-Americans had played in shaping our country's history. And whereas during Black History Month, we recognize and remember that many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the Black and African-American communities have made valuable and lasting contributions in the history and culture of the United States. And whereas the Black History Month also affords a special opportunity to further educate ourselves on the prejudice that still exists in our country and working together to overcome this inequality. Whereas the City of Millbury honors the rich legacy of African-Americans who faced generations of apparent racism, discriminations, and hatred. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle the systemic racism present in our society and build a community that lifts up to its democratic ideals and promises. And whereas the Black History Month recognizes the importance, sacrifices, and contributions of Black Americans to the development of the United States and to the world. So now therefore, we, the members of the Millbury City Council, do hereby proclaim February 25 as Black History Month. And thank you for joining us today. We have Steve Henderson, our very own community member, and also welcome Alexis Lewis joining us today. Would you like to have a few words for us?
See if I got this right. Good. Mayor Feng, members of the City Council, staff, dignitaries, and folks here, I'm proud to accept this recognition of Black History Month in Millbury. My wife Cindy and I are raising our four children here. We're both active in the community and emphasize community involvement with our children. We recognize that citizenship in our republic requires awareness, discernment, and trust in one another. Ultimately, it comes down to relationships. America is a bilingual nation-state. Ideally, we recognize and respect diversity, govern our communities with equity, and institutionalized inclusion. In many ways, Americans are better off today than we were when King was alive. It is disappointing, however, that we've not come further since the Fourteenth Amendment, which guarantees all Americans equal protection under the law, was passed. Today, Americans face daunting challenges influenced by fear and fueled by narratives that have driven a wedge between us. Race, immigration, and divergent political views are but a few of the divisive issues today. Political strife has recently impacted our community, and for many, there is healing yet to occur. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in times of convenience and comfort, but where he stands in times of challenge and controversy." King also said that darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. The truth is, we have more in common today than we have differences. So I ask, where do we stand as Americans? And what are we prepared to do to build a brighter future? So here's my call to action for everyone listening. I challenge members of our community to realize the promise of our great country and build strong bonds with one another, galvanized by trust, respect, and love. Together, let's build a more promising future for our families and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve Henderson. Ms. Lewis, would you like to have a few words for us as well?
Thank you, Mayor Feng. I first want to say that I had the honor of working with Steve on the Harriet Tubman Memorial, which was a very special project for me. And to be here again with him tonight is very special. Thank you, Steve, for all that you do for the community and for being a teacher, which I think is a very admirable profession. Thank you, councilmembers, city staff, for recognizing Black History Month. This recognition is a powerful reminder of the vital contributions of Black Americans and what they've made and the contributions they've made to our communities and to our nation, and it serves as a call to continue working toward a more equitable future for all of us. This proclamation is not just a symbolic gesture but a commitment to actively address systemic inequalities and create a more inclusive society. I am humbled to be a part of a community that recognizes the resilience of our people and look forward to working with the citizens of Millbury and the other cities of San Mateo County to help all members of our communities live and thrive in San Mateo County. Thank you so much. And I think Catherine Haysford is here also with me, and I think Catherine had a few words to say.
We'd love to have a few words from Kathy as well.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I am Catherine Haysford, a resident of Foster City, and I am here this evening to thank the city of Millbury for recognizing Black History Month. Recognition of the contributions of Black Americans across various sectors from science, literature, to politics and arts are celebrated during Black History Month. This year, we focus our celebration on the significant contribution of Blacks in the workforce throughout history. From the days of slavery to the present, work has been central to Black history and culture. As we celebrate Black History Month, let us use this opportunity to reflect on the past, learn from our history, and work together to build a better future. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. And at this time, I'm going to have all of you join us for a photo, and it'll be nice. Thank you all for joining us for this presentation. Next, we have presentation of the Central County Fire Department, CCFD, on community and internal survey result. And we have our chief, Pucci, joining us today.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and councilmember Dave Pucci, Fire Chief for the Central County Fire Department. Last budget year, we found, we're planning on doing a strategic plan for the fire department for the next three to five years. And as part of that process, we did a survey, both the community as well as internal survey, to really gauge where we are, determine the threats and opportunities for the department. And this is going to be a brief introduction to what we found. I'll spoil the ending a little bit in that we're very pleased with the results that we found, and I'll go through those different measurements. So we can have the next slide. You can go to the next slide. So for the methodology, there was a lot of in-person interviews, and it was across community members, elected officials, board members. And several of those were done, and we looked at strengths and challenges, community partners, those were developers in our area, people that are working closely with the fire department to seek their input. And then we also did an anonymous survey where we had both internal and community surveys. We pushed that really hard at community events with a QR code to be able to get people to anonymously submit their opinions on the fire service. So next slide. Go to the next one. So the strengths, and this is from our community partners. We scored very high on the professionalism of the fire department, collaboration with other public safety agencies, working with Public Works, and working with our police partners, emergency preparedness, responsiveness, and accessibility of services. And our strengths were satisfaction for our employees internally, safety and well-being, public engagement, and public communication. Next slide. Weaknesses that were identified. Our community partners identified communication gaps. The more we tend to communicate, the more feedback we get that the community wants more, so we'll continue to push forward on that. Insufficient public education was a feedback that we got. Accessibility to our services in certain areas. Need new resources to address hazards in certain areas, and then also board representation on the fire board from the city of Millbury. And from our staff, we have, we definitely have aging infrastructure that includes both our facilities as well as our apparatus. We're working to correct that. Recruitment and retention is getting harder and harder, particularly to find paramedics, and we will continue to work on that. We're really working towards a sustainable financial plan for the fire department to right-size our funding for the future needs of the department, and we'll be communicating through our board and to the council on that. Internal communications, that would be communication primarily for me to the work staff but also throughout the organization, and insufficient opportunities to develop and recruit paramedics. Next slide. So the opportunities, as we can expand our public outreach, we're working on diversifying our department, continued partnerships with our business partners, and really our CERT program, which is one of our best public outreach tools that we have, with so much enthusiasm behind it, we'll continue to work on growing that. The FD staff, there are opportunities they saw with future funding upgrades to the department to address some of those deferred items such as facilities and apparatus. Greater opportunities for training, and it's really around internal candidates being able to be supported to get through paramedic school. Internal communications, it's always something that comes up with in fire departments, being on three different shifts, leveraging new technologies, looking at things like drone programs for search and rescue and those kinds of technologies, and explore regionalization, really trying to benefit from economies of scale by expanding our borders of the department if it meets the needs of other community cities next to us. Next slide. And then threats. We have, we're growing. Our area is growing. You know about all the development going on in Millbury. That puts a stress on the services provided. Our call volume is up to over 9,000 calls per year, and so that has steadily risen over, over the years, and that's a trend that we're seeing throughout San Mateo County. Certainly a risk of large-scale disaster, aging infrastructure, and that doesn't mean just fire department facilities. That could refer to water supply issues that we have, systems that, you know, the city infrastructure, and expansion of life sciences that brings specific response need for the fire department to those facilities. From our staff, there is, retention is top of mind for them, as well as sustainability. We have, we received an $8.1 million grant last year to provide 12 personnel to expand our services in the community, and so that is happening right now. But in year four, that grant expires, and continuing those services will cost money to be able to continue that. Aging apparatus, which I mentioned, we talked about the increased call volume, and then lack of advanced training really gets, refers to our rescue program in paramedics. And go to the next slide. So this is our community partner survey findings. So this is the anonymous survey to the community that we, they may have been at the Art and Wine Festival, scanned our QR code and filled that out, and so this was anonymous on their part. Go to the next slide. And these are really overwhelmingly positive. So put it in context, a five-star, four-star rating is agree or strongly agree. So when we look at a chart like this, we have well over 75% of our community members saying that we are responsive to the community. So that's a very high score. Next slide. Our professionalism, this is kind of off the charts with what the community came back to us with. Really, it's five and four stars in the 90 percentile there. Next slide. Our community outreach, we are scoring very high, well over 75% here. We can always do more, but the community is very satisfied with our community outreach at this point. And next slide. Emergency preparedness, this referred to one of our strengths from the community before. You can see over 75% is in favor of our community preparedness. This refers to both the CERT program as well as our preparation as our cities train for and are able to respond to disasters. Next slide. And accessibility of services available to all members of the community. You can see that we're in the 80% area that everyone feels we are responsive and available to them. Safety and public safety, we, or safety in public spaces, excuse me. It's not just about actually being safe in the community, it's about our members of our community actually feeling safe as they're walking through or traveling through the community, so this is also a very high score. And next slide. And collaboration with other services, the fire department does not operate on an island. We rely on our public safety partners, particularly Public Works, particularly police when we respond to certain events, and so this is a very high score with collaboration. And next slide. Public information and communication, this is, as you can see, well over 75, close to 80% of respondents are hearing enough information from the fire department. That is something that we always try to find new ways to improve our communication to the community. And next slide. And responding to community needs, these are special needs or events that come up and our responsiveness to be able to meet the need at that time. So this could be, the Art and Wine in particular is a particular event that's very popular that we have to ramp up to be able to support and the community responds to that. And overall satisfaction, this is a high score. We're very fortunate in the fire service that we have a very positive relationship with the community. I think this is reflective of that. And next slide. And the fire department employee survey, so firefighters tend to be a little harder on themselves, so in some ways, they're evaluating how they perceive the service that we are delivering. So we'll go run through these really quick. And next slide. So training and development, this is a good score. This is well above, actually, across the board, our scores are well above what our consultant has seen in other municipal agencies and fire departments that they have worked. So this is the training and development. It's really a limit of time and availability of training that they want and seek. Next slide. Equipment and resources, this is one of our problem areas when it comes to apparatus and facilities. We need to continue to work on our plan to be able to, it's not a bad score, but we do have some costly items that are out there when it comes to facilities and apparatus. And next slide. Work culture and environments, and so this is a positive score, and I would suspect that this is continuing to trend upwards. When we look at this, and I think it's the next slide, communication. Through the strategic planning process, it was very inclusive of department members to be able to actually guide how our strategic plan was developed, and so that was part of our communications. And if I suspect we did this survey again today, they would feel much better about that. And next slide. Leadership, this is the confidence of the department within the leadership of clear direction and support, and this is also one of those, that that clear direction and support was part of the strategic planning process, and this is a very good score in comparison to other fire departments and the direction that we're going. Career advancement, this is how the department feels about it. Career advancement is really, opportunity exists when people retire or leave the department, and so we can't create extra captain positions for future advancement. It's really, we have what we have, and people have to promote it to them. Next slide. Safety, they feel very safe. We operate in a safe manner, and that is a priority on the fire ground as well as in the fire station, responding to traffic accidents. They feel safe when they're operating. And next slide. Work-life balance, this is quite healthy when it comes to a fire department. You hear about a lot of departments having to staff through mandatory overtime, and we are not in that position. And so while people are working overtime, sometimes mandatory overtime, that is not to the degree that we see in other departments. Overtime can actually get very toxic and really wear out the employees, and we're not there. That is very satisfying to see. And next slide. Community engagement, this is how the fire department felt that we were engaging the community through events throughout the, throughout our three communities. And next slide. And then professionalism, they really pride themselves, they score themselves a little harsher. If you recall, the, the community survey on this subject was overwhelmingly positive in the 90%. Firefighters tend to be harder on themselves, but they are very, professionalism is very important to the workforce, and this is how they would rate themselves. And next slide. And then probably this, one of the slides I'm most proud of, this is really overall employee satisfaction within the fire department, with four stars and five stars making up nearly 75%, and three stars, we admit, it's a very positive place to be as an agency, so very pleased with this. I believe this is the last slide. Correct? Yep. So any questions on that before I move on to some of the emergency incidents in Los Angeles County, give you a brief overview of that?
Any council questions?
Yeah, one question here, Mayor.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
You had mentioned that calls are up today for emergency services for CCFD. You mentioned 9,000 calls as of today. Do you have a rough percentage of the increase of those calls? And also, can you break down what the majority of those increases of calls are? Is it in response to fentanyl overdose, response to injury from a car accident?
Sure. So throughout San Mateo County, what we're seeing is a 2% to 5% uptick in the number of calls per year. We are certainly seeing a significant increase in overdose calls, and so that would be classified as a medical aid. We don't break it down further than that when we do, our standards of cover studies and that, but it would be classified as a medical aid if someone overdoses. So I've certainly seen an increase in that and calls across the board. More people in town, more vehicle accidents across the board.
One last final comment, just want to congratulate you on the great numbers here with what looks to be high-ranking remarks from employee satisfaction as well as customer satisfaction as well. It's very commendable.
Thank you.
One last shameless plug for the CERT program, which I'm participating in. For any residents here or anyone watching from abroad, I highly recommend the program to you. If not for yourself, for your neighbors, you never know when there's going to be an emergency, and you can never be too prepared.
And we do have a couple classes coming up on that, and one's being taught in Mandarin, and so we're going to be repeating that as well, and that's been well-received by our community. Okay. All right. So just a quick overview of the recent disasters in L.A. County. So we had the Palisades and the Eaton Fire. When the fires first broke out, what L.A. County was experiencing was sustained 80 mile an hour winds as part of a Santa Ana wind event. And so there was a Category 1 hurricane, and those winds were continuous with gusts above 100 miles per hour. Because of the topographies, especially on the Palisades, or, excuse me, the Altadena side, the Eaton Fire, the weather experts referred to it as a wind wave, where the wind came over the crest of the hills and then collapsed and blew that fire out with explosive growth. The initial ICA spoke to when I was down there said his initial command post was set up at a city park and that he was trying to command the fire, and the ember cast was so heavy that he had to move. And he described the ember cast, which is normally some brush that, you know, it's embers going through, that's like ash. He was describing actually pieces of house, pieces of structure, because the winds were so high that were on flames and blowing over his command post and igniting fires behind him. And so in Altadena, what you saw is really heavy, like you saw on the news, heavy residential damage as the fire really transitioned from wildland fire into a structure fire and then propagated structure to structure. And then when you got down to the flats, where it was mostly commercial, it was a patchwork of a CVS being completely consumed or a supermarket, and there would be four businesses that would be completely intact, then a large commercial structure that was completely lost. And so the, if they had every resource they could have asked for when those winds were going on, mother nature gets a vote in these, and there was no stopping that fire. It was going to go where it wanted to go that night until the winds died down. We did send two engines as part of three strike teams from San Mateo County, and they were down there for two weeks. My team got activated towards the end of the fire, another team was activated and managed the fire. And our team was there for watershed protection, mud flow mitigation, and protection of the drinking water, because all of those toxins that burned for the houses or the vehicles that were in the street had to be, we put bunting around it, basically it absorbs chemicals or fuel to keep that runoff from going into their water system and contaminating the drinking water. So there's still a team presence down there, there'll be a presence there for a long time. I mentioned to the mayor earlier before the meeting that there was a tremendous amount of public or in, in of public or in elected official interest. So I spent a lot of time meeting with many members of Congress and as well as the state level, giving tours of the, of the fire. So I think there's going to be quite a bit of legislation, I don't know what exactly it's going to look like yet, but there is a lot of drive at the federal and state level for, for changes and mitigation efforts before a fire. So if you have any questions for that, happy to answer that. I was down there for two weeks, both on the Palisades side as well as the Eaton Fire side, so got to see both.
Thank you for the update, Chief. Anyone else on this council have any questions for Chief Pucci? Councilmember Nguyen.
So it was mentioned earlier about the bio-science, life science. Do you have any specific mitigation plans for how we're going to handle that particular region?
Well, the mitigation really starts at the plan review process, and so as these buildings get proposed to the city, they go through the regular permitting process, we have an opportunity to comment on the fire protection systems. And so the buildings by their, by design are really fire-resistant and designed to containment and, I would have to say, quite safe in consideration. So that's where mitigation really starts, and then it really turns into response capabilities. So we do have the ability to respond to a fire or a hazmat situation in those buildings. Through our partnerships throughout the county, the hazmat team would respond from Belmont as part of San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department, and so we have the capability to really address whatever would come up. But really by the building design, they are quite safe.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, and I'd like to commend you on the excellent survey results and also your work on those fires down in Southern California. I noticed in the, as you mentioned, in the employee survey, there were a couple of areas where maybe there's a little bit of room for improvement, such as the training and some of the equipment. I'm curious, is that mainly a resources issue? Is there some type of plan to address some of those areas?
Ultimately, it is a resource issue, and we have to be thoughtful about where the money goes, and we also have to plan kind of in a graduated approach where I'm not coming to you with one big bill. We're really trying to march out a multi-year plan on how we get everything back on track. One of the bigger capital items that we look at are fire apparatus. They are running one point one, one point two million per unit, and we would get a lifespan out of those up to fifteen years per vehicle. And the more technology that they put into the vehicles, their lifespan is going to start coming down. They're going to break more frequently, and so we're going to, we're developing a plan as part of the strategic plan to come up with a replacement cycle and fund it appropriately so that way when it's time to replace something, we already have the cash on hand to be able to pay for it, and that's cheaper. We don't have to finance or anything like that. So that is part of the strategic planning process.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and as you know, Millbrae is not part of the Fire Board. We would like to join the Fire Board at some point. I think it's been about ten years now that we've been a client city, but I think whether we're a future board member or not, we'd certainly like to continue to work with you on addressing those plans over the years.
Absolutely, and we were very intentional when it came to the strategic planning process to invite city staff from Millbrae to be part of that conversation, and it was very helpful getting their input.
All right. Anything? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Riley.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank all of you who work hard to protect our home and us. You're our hero, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Thank you, Chief, for coming down and giving us the presentation, and congratulations on getting the safer grant. How many million was that?
Eight point one.
Eight point, yeah, a little over eight million dollar, and that translates to, you mentioned a number of headcounts?
Twelve firefighters, so that allows us to put a fourth firefighter on the truck, which enables the truck to do two tasks on a fire rather than one, and then also reopen Station Thirty-Six on Rawlins, which is going to have a very significant improvement in service for Millbrae. They're right next to Barton Station, which is a source of quite a few calls in the city of Millbrae, as well as relieve some of the pressure on Engine Thirty-Seven right next to us, which is one of the busiest engines in the county.
Yeah, because we also have, I mean, on Rawlins, we have our life science buildings, you know, getting close to completion now. There are also a good number of residential, new residential on Rawlins on the Burlingame side of it, so I think the new reopening of that fire station will certainly be helpful to reduce the response time and be able to offer better services and, like you said, having a fourth headcount. But you also mentioned that it was for the first four years, you know, kind of want to think a little bit ahead of here, you know, the fifth year and beyond, how are we going to, you know, address it, you know, some of these financials and how Millbrae can be a part of that, and how do you see this moving forward?
Well, the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to reapply for the grants. Some agencies have received a three-year extension on our existing grant.
Okay.
But we're not going to rely on that for, for planning purposes. I never budget based on grants that haven't been awarded. That's our, our hope. But no, we're talking to the city managers of all three cities and talking about what the dollars mean to each city, and each city has a slightly different approach. Hillsborough's looking at a property tax assessment update, Burlingame is looking at putting some money away ahead of time, and I would let the city manager comment on his thoughts as far as how Millbrae might approach that.
Mm-hmm.
Ideally, I would love to be able to renew that and come back to you with eight more million dollars, but we'll see.
Okay, excellent. And also a little bit for our city manager, Mr. Williams as well. I mean, we've obviously had this discussion during the strategic planning, at having Millbrae be a part of the district, we have an interest in that, you know, Vice Mayor also mentioned that a moment ago. I think perhaps we should have a process to get that dialogue going so that we can, you know, whether it's the staff level or at the elected level, how we can get this process started, sooner to get this done, the better, I think, for all three cities and the entire district. So perhaps we should have a plan in place and bring it back to the council for sort of a formal process.
I can comment briefly on the formal process. We will first review the draft that we talked about before the meeting.
Correct.
Then I'll bring it to the board for approval and adoption, and I'll come back and actually do a report to you and present the strategic plan to the council for, for all three cities.
Sounds like, sounds like a plan.
Right.
Thank you so much, Chief. Anyone else for our Chief Pucci? Thank you so much, and thank you for all you do.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may real quick, I'd like to commend Chief Pucci since he's, since he's taken the leadership role as, as chief for CCFD, he's been very inclusive, very, very good lines of communication. As he mentioned, included us in the strategic plan process of which we did mention.
Correct.
The, the implementation of Millbrae joining the district. So we will be placing an item on a, on a upcoming council agenda for discussion and then perhaps a formal resolution of adoption for that request back to, back to the CCFD board.
Working in conjunction with the strategic plan adoptions at the same time from a timeline perspective?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Moving on to item number two, which is the agenda overview and staff briefing. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide us with a city manager update, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the city council. Again, Tom Williams, city manager. So this past weekend, as you all know, you were in attendance, we had a beautiful sunny day to celebrate the grand reopening of the Marina Vista Park. It was a huge success. We had probably close to five hundred or more community members attending to explore the park and all the exciting new features. What's most exciting is down on the bottom left, the city council and all the kids that showed up for the park that helped cut the ribbon, and it's just one of those great, great times as, as being a city to provide improvements to, to the neighborhood and especially all the smiles on the kids enjoying the new park, which features now a fenced-in playground, a climbing net, a large slide, two small basketball courts that double as a soccer field. You can see on the top right, those are the, the soccer nets. That's the first implementation of that product, as I understand, of anywhere in the United States. So this, kids can go and kick the soccer ball and have soccer games on the, on the court, so pretty, pretty exciting to launch that. Also, a serene garden with crepe myrtle trees, a pollinator-friendly plants, a bioswell that acts as a filtration system to ensure stormwater runoff and reducing water pollution. Also, park enhancements include benches, a drinking fountain for both humans and dogs and pets, a dog waste station, and improved infrastructure with a covered picnic area and barbecue. So if anybody did happen to miss the grand opening, please go check out the renovated park. It's a, it's a great new addition to the neighborhood in the city of Millbrae. Also, we've launched the city's twenty twenty-five Millbrae Green Business Initiative, which allows local businesses to showcase their commitment to sustainability and their valuable recognition. The Green Business Network connects businesses with resources and support. Incentives for going green that include financial incentives, free technical assistance, educational materials, and public recognition upon certification. So our goal is for Millbrae businesses to become certified by Earth Day, which is April twenty-second of this year. The first ten businesses that do get certified will receive a special green certificate of excellence that they can, that they can display in their store. So city staff will provide the ongoing technical assistance throughout the certification process. If any businesses are interested, they can visit our website at bit.ly backslash go green Millbrae. So again, bit.ly backslash go green Millbrae. People can also jump on our website for further information and direction. Also, on January thirty-first, last Friday, we had the San Mateo Daily Senior, or two Fridays ago, I guess, the San Mateo Daily Senior Showcase. Again, it was a tremendous success in partnering with the Daily Journal to bring over three hundred attendees. You can see on the top left the line of, of people getting into the, to the showcase. The event is a hub of valuable resources, expert connections, and community support for older adults and their families. Participants were treated to basic medical screening, performances by opera singer Deborah Rosengau, Tai Chi demonstrations by Debbie Au and her students, and entertaining the storytelling and music by Charlie Chin with Victor Labrador, and so it was just a fantastic day. And this, again, it's a great partnership that we have with the Daily Journal for our seniors. Also, we had our Fix-It Clinic, which again was another big success over at the library. We had right around a hundred people in attendance and fifteen coaches that people could come in and bring in things that they needed to repair within their household, from computer repair to bicycles, kitchen appliances, cleaning tools, miscellaneous that, that people bring in. So the future Fix-It Clinics that we will continue to have, because this has been such a great success, also are available on our website and will continue to, to get the word out to the community for these Fix-It Clinics. Upcoming events, Friday, February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, we are hosting a Millbrae Goes to the Movies. The movie is Inside Out, so anybody can attend the event for free. Starts at six thirty PM at the Millbrae Recreation Center located at four seven seven Lincoln Circle in the Large Great Room. Also, since it's Valentine's, we have a special service for parents. They can drop their children off, ages five to eleven, for a parent's night out. It's thirty dollars for residents, fifty dollars for non-residents. We have forty-eight spots, of which twenty families are registered, so there's still room between now and Friday. Again, registration can be accessed via our website and our recreation department. Saturday, February fifteenth, we have a listening forum that is, will be hosted by Councilmember Sissy Riley from District Two, so please join us for this listening session. This is at ten AM in the Great Room at the Millbrae Recreation Center. I will note, for the public, I know the council has, has been trained on the Brown Act, but a lot of people ask questions, why can't the other council members attend these listening sessions, individual council members within the district? And that's because the, the Brown Act, which is a state law that requires public noticing, formal public noticing of a quorum of city council members when, when they meet on anything. And so under state law, council, other council members are actually prohibited from attending because it would be considered a, a meeting of the city council. And so the Brown Act is something that we really need to adhere to and avoid a quorum of, of the city council without proper notification. So for the public's benefit, that's why council members, as much as I know you all would want to attend and, and participate, state law actually prohibits it, so I just wanted the public to, to understand that. And then lastly, Mayor, item eleven on the agenda, which is the consideration of a resolution approving the admission of the city of Millbrae into the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement with the California Municipal Finance Authority. Item eleven, we'd like to move up as the first item before the public hearing, so after consent calendar, the first item. This needs to be adopted prior to item eight, the public hearing item. And so that's the only agenda change that staff is requesting.
Thank you so much, city manager, and may also had a, a report out for January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. At the closed session, I thought you referenced, direction was given and there is no reportable action.
Thank you for the update. All right. So that wraps up the agenda overview for today and the staff briefing. Moving on to approval minutes, and we have a regular meeting minutes on December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Any council comment or discussion on the meeting minutes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliver?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
The meeting minutes passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much, and today we do not have any oral reports from city committees and commission chair, and that brings us to the next item, which is public communications. This portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speakers must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of city council. And every, every speaker will have three minutes, and the speaker is to address directly to the entire council, but not individual council members nor to the public. I have a few speaker slips here in the chamber, and we'll start with that, and then after that, we will move on to online speakers. First of all, first of all, the speakers is Tom Belvini.
Counsel, thank you, counsel and mayor. My name is Tom Belvini. I'm not a resident, but I'm a property owner downtown Millbrae and Broadway, and I wanted to address this, it's called New City. It's a plan that's been, we received this late last year, all the property owners, I guess, got this. I, I think this is a dangerous plan for merchants and property owners. For those who don't know what it is, it's a tax on downtown property owners. It seems unnecessary and expensive, it appears to be rather frivolous, and it lets an outside company manage the plant, the funds, and it just seems a little ludicrous. The, so first and foremost, the cost of this tax, we pass directly to the shoppers and users of Millbrae, right, rent increases from landlords. I estimate my first year payment will be twenty-five hundred dollars, and I don't know, is that a static number? Is it something that's continuous? It's not really explained that much in this thing, but I kind of see increases happening annually. I also think that this is little to do with Millbrae and a lot to do with New City. New City Incorporated is a company that goes to different cities and makes these proposals and, you know, puts a tax out and then, and, and I don't know really what the benefit is. They, they say it's district identity, civil sidewalk, safety and cleanliness, and this seems like a job for the city, the public works, the police, the city staff. The property owners are already paying, we pay, you know, city, county, state taxes, all the merchants play, pay all these taxes as well, and, what do you call it, sales tax, et cetera. They have an administrative contingency, I don't know what that's for. It, it just seems really nebulous, and it's not, there's nothing concrete in here. My encounters with the, with the merchants on Broadway is they need more parking, and downtown parking is lacking. Go down there in the middle of the day, you cannot park, you can't find a spot. The, the parking behind the three hundred block on, you know, on Magnolia, well, my, just so everybody knows, my dad had a shoe store there, he helped get that parking established back in the day. Why don't we put three-story parking back there? What, why don't we use funds for that instead? Why do we have to, you know, pursue this kind of frivolous sort of thing? It seems frivolous to me. Anyway. Anyway, I really reject this, and I'm, I'm gonna be against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the comment.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Belvini. Next up is Bill Clark.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. My name is Bill Clark. I've been a Meadow Glen resident for 70-plus years, and Millbrae, in my opinion, the quality continues to drop in living conditions. That's my opinion. What are the policies for the following? Parking in front of my home and other neighbors' homes. Tenants walk blocks from, from the multi-units to park in front of my home and my neighbors' homes. Additionally, I have Uber, use, airport travelers, parking. It takes six days between a 72-hour and a 72-hour tow before, after I ask for a tagging, preventing me basically, basic minimum conveniences in front of my house, the enjoyment of my residence and my neighbors' residence. Now you'll be adding how many units over here on the old Office Depot? It's just gonna push out. It's already Magnolia, they're pushing west, and it, all it's gonna do is put parking more in the residential areas. Pedestrian safety, e-bike speeding in, in the bike lanes, sidewalks, no care, no insurance, no license. They reach speeds of over 25 miles an hour. If they can keep up with traffic on El Camino, that's pretty dangerous on, on the city, the city area. Cars rolling through stop signs, not stopping at all. I personally was almost run over here, over here by Magnolia and Anita, bright yellow rain jacket with the dog. I'm halfway in, someone comes around Meadow Glen, they almost takes me out. I do not want to be this gentleman. Nobody should be this gentleman. As far as the hazards, the health hazards in Millbrae, dog feces not picked up, discarded food containers, cigarette butts all over the place downtown Millbrae. Now I'm witnessing, not witnessing them doing it, but the remnants of urinating were over on the, the north end of Millbrae Square where Uber parking is. You can see it on the ground. It's not coffee, they're pouring out, they're not pouring their coffee out. They're urinating on the, on, in the parking lot early morning, whatever it is they have to do. That's all Uber parking now. It's, maybe it's just me? I, I'd like to know what your policies and remedies are. Is it just me? I don't think so. I think I've talked to, when you guys were running for office, of some of these things. But with that, I think that Millbrae really should start looking at some of these. If you consider them small, they're not small. It's a decline that's happening. So, anyway, I thank you for your time, and I will be at your meeting. I commend you for having a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next up is Vern Bruce.
See if I can get this low enough. It worked. Anyway, good evening, Mayor and city council persons, people. I'm here representing Millbrae Lock, 311 El Camino, Real, and as a resident, new resident. Pretty much everything I heard from Mr. Belvini there, I would have to agree with, and that's mostly what I was gonna be talking about anyway. Of the half a dozen or so property owners that I've talked to, none of them are in favor of the CBD. Pretty much everybody agrees that the biggest problem in downtown Millbrae is parking. It is the one thing that keeps my business from growing and my neighbors' businesses. Right now, we have not only a need for the parking garage, as he described, pretty much three stories is what we've been talking about for years, but also we have the four parklets in town, which are just simply adding significantly to the problem. One up the street from me has 40, exactly 40 chairs sitting inside of it and on the sidewalk, on the public sidewalk. If we assume that every two people ride in one car, those 40 chairs would be 20 cars taking up 20 spaces, in addition to the spaces that they're legally, and I call it legally, that's my term, entitled to, for this, for the tables and chairs that are inside the business. And of course, we have the four spaces that the parklet actually takes up. It's simply not doable. My customers cannot park pretty much between 11 and 2, and after about 3:30 on up. And I know my neighbors that are open after I am because I close at 5:00. I know my neighbors, primarily restaurants, are not excited about it either for the same reason. I've been down there trying to park in the evening, just trying to come in and do work at the shop. I have a heck of a time parking. Probably better off parking in San Bruno and walking. Anyway, so that's, that's what I have to say. In summary, close the parklets yesterday. I don't care what tax dollars they're bringing in, because whatever tax dollars they're bringing in, I'll pay you. I'll be very happy to pay you. And start the garage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Alice Kwong.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and new onboard council member. Happy New Year, and Happy New Year to all of the audience here. Best wishes to Millbrae and our residents here. I've been in Millbrae for a long time, but I have three, few professional titles. One is a very successful business owner. Another one is a very successful insurance and financial planning agent for 30 years. Today, while I talk this subject, I don't have any comfort of interest, but I have good heart and care about our cities. I wish our city become a great Millbrae. Everyone, I believe, in the table here, willing to do so. But Millbrae is going to propose for a CDB, Community Benefit District. Sounds great, but the format for this time is totally ugly. Number one, the source of fund is wrong. When we want to do something, of course, we need money. But where we get the money? This is purely to get it from downtown property owner, from a 601 parcel property owner. Some property owner, they don't care, of course, if they're a public company, or they're very, very big, rich company, or they may need to buy any other future benefit from the city. Those parts of, those property owner will be agree. I know that. But majority property owner, like Tom or other business owner, they sitting here, they may not speak to me. Wherever we thought, we taught them, none of them agreed. The source of fund, where we talking about? The source of fund is wrong, completely wrong. The second, the way to management of the fund is completely wrong. The way is, they, they are going to, once they get all the money, they're going to have a third party, it's called non-perfect organization, 51C company. I believe a lot of people know, non-perfect mean they're very perfect. The reason is, they will have an overhead. The first facial year will come, you're going to almost get 1 million from those property owners, additional property tax. We pay already, everyone pay property tax. I believe all Millbrae, all property owner, by the, another coming for the property tax, we at, at least get three more property tax. Item one is the state school bond, county school bond, and Millbrae school bond. And for the downtown 601 parcel property owner, we're go, going to get additional property tax for, is called Community Benefit District, which is not fair. To make Millbrae great again, that is responsibility, it's not the property owner, it's more. And please.
Ms. Kwong?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I need additional transparency to see how much the city spend money to make this plan. And second, more town hall meeting, and make sure all the property owner knows.
We heard you.
And I will come back another, another time.
Thank you, Ms. Kwong, we heard you.
And San Francisco spent 32 million for 15 districts, and San Francisco is going to bankruptcy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwong. Just wanted to make sure that everybody get a fair amount of time to speak. And that wraps up all the in-chamber speaker. And City Clerk, would you please call on the, those on Zoom?
The first speaker online is Anne Snyder. Please accept the mute. All right, I will come back to Ms. Snyder and...
Let's go to Sunny and then come back to Ms. Schneider after.
All right, Sunny Al, please accept the mute.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Oh, good evening, Mayor and also council members. Um, I'm, my name is Sunny. I'm behalf of a resident in Millbrae, and also I'm one of the members for the Economic Development Advisory Committee right now. And I have seen the, uh, the PowerPoint from the New City that actually were the company that actually going to be doing the CBD for Millbrae. And just to let you know that I have a company in Oakland that actually encounter with New, New City America too. And at that time, it was 2001, I mean, 21. They were put, uh, they were telling us that they would pretty much do the same thing as it shows on the PDF that they presented to us. But the thing is, like, once they wasted the money, they didn't really perform as they would, they were saying, and we had a hard time to communicate with them. So I really think that we should reconsider us using this company. And I also have reached out to other city, and seems like our city has some other ways to actually, to do CBD in different type of style, which mean they could, uh, set up their own, using their own merchants to set up similar style of community to actually do the same thing instead of hiring consulting company to actually helping us to, to build that CBD. And, uh, yeah, so I really think that, you know, this is not a good company to use, because last that I seen what they done, and they have kind of selling to me how good of a job they do in LA, which is not, all the LA downtown wouldn't be that bad right now. And also the same thing, Oakland will not be that bad right now, because I'm still paying like, about like $9,000 per year for their money, I mean, for the sweat privilege that I have to pay for the CBD costs. Uh, that's all I have to say, and thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Al Young. And City Clerk, would you see if Ms. Anne Schneider can speak?
Anne Snyder, please accept the mute and begin.
I'm here, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I wanted to let you know that I've attended a couple of Measure K related meetings. Dan Quigg has long been one of the two representatives from District 1, Supervisory District 1. He is now termed out. Michael Salazar from San Bruno is still on that committee, but there is an opening. It would be nice to keep someone from Millbrae, and elected officials are eligible. The application period is open. This is the group that oversees the guidelines of how Measure K funds should be used and gives that information to the Board of Supervisors. So that application period is open right now. The other thing that Measure K, they only meet twice a year. They are, they started looking at how the funds are being used, and if the funds are being used regionally. I had looked into this last summer and found, for example, a senior group out of Coastside, so how, around the Half Moon Bay area, good project, but in its listing, it said that it was countywide. So I commented at the Measure K meeting last week that they need to be careful in what is truly countywide and what is not. One of the reasons this is very important now is our new supervisor, Jackie Spear, has said that Measure K funds should be utilized by all, by entities all over the county on that. So I encourage the Millbrae City Council to look at how Measure K is there and see if one of you or another member of the public would like to apply, or several people will apply. The positions would be available for Burlingame, Millbrae, there's already somebody from San Bruno, South City, or Hillsborough. So there is competition for that one seat. The other thing to bring up is Measure K will come up to the Board of Supervisors meeting on March 11th. This is how they plan to organize and give out funds. They already gave out funds or approved some today on Measure K, but if someone there from the city, it would be great to have them there for the March 11th Board of Supervisor meeting on Measure K. I encourage the city council, I have brought it up to both Supervisor Spear in writing as well as at today's meeting, but it might be a great idea for this, this council to write another letter saying, hey, wouldn't it be great to get La Quinta off the plans so the city of Millbrae can plan on that TOT in our budget? Today's discussion was largely about how the county's not gonna have enough money, they're gonna have to cut back on Measure K, blah, blah, blah. But they don't seem to understand that they have an impact on, on city budgets too. So that's my Measure K update. Dan Quigg served many years. The city council may want to thank Dan Quigg for his many years of service. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. All right, so that, I believe that wraps up all the public speaker, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you so very much, and that also concluded our public's, public communication tonight. Moving on.
If I may, just, just for the benefit of the public and the people that are here in attendance, just so they know, and then you mentioned it, unfortunately, the council cannot respond or have any communication because these items are not on the agenda. And so the only communication be for items when they're placed on the agenda. We will have an agenda item regarding the BID here shortly in a council meeting, and we'll make sure that everyone has that agenda, as well as at the next meeting of February 25th, we will be presenting our downtown parking management plan. So I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar that's interested in downtown parking. So in two weeks from this evening, the parking management plan will be presented.
And it's also my understanding that the New City America is also gonna do some community outreach and reach out to property owners in downtown to explain what that plan is and what that plan isn't, source of funds, all of that information will be available through the consultant, correct?
Right, that, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. So we, we will be scheduling, we, we've had meetings, but we'll continue to
Correct.
communicate with our downtown property owners as it's so important to our local microeconomy and the look of downtown and the appearance of downtown. So we, we want to educate everyone and hear feedback from them as we proceed so we can move forward in a great partnership with our business community.
Yeah, so just for the benefit of the public, you know, some of these town hall meetings and, and community outreach will be publicly available. Look out for our email and newsletter updates to attend these meetings so that you get the firsthand information, the accurate information as to what this plan is and what this plan isn't, so that we're on the same page. All right, so, bring up, now, this brings us to the next item, which is the consent calendar. We have item number five, adoption of a resolution approving and authorizing. The city manager or designated to execute the second revised and restated Joint Exercise of Power Agreement with the Sematell County Operational Area Emergency Services Organization. Item number six, adoption of a resolution accepting the Arroyo Seco Storm Drain Bypass Project as complete, approving revised total project construction budget and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Sematell County Recorder's Office. Item seven, adoption of a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager or designated to execute an agreement for professional services with ER engineering for Phase 2 main, force main conditions assessment program development. Does anybody want to pull any item from the consent calendar? Any public comment from any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion if anybody would like to make one. Vice Mayor?
Move approval.
Vice Mayor, move approval?
I'll second that.
You have a second from Councilmember Rinaldi? Any final comments? Roll call, please.
All in favor, please say aye, and if you oppose, please. Yeah, no.
Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please. Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of five zero.
Okay, so just for the point of order, Mr. City Manager, do we open the public hearing and then bring item eleven? Or is it just item eleven and then do the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, move item eleven, hear item eleven, then move to item eight and open the public hearing.
Okay, very well, thank you. So item number eleven on new business, consideration of a resolution approving the admission of the City of Millbrae into joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority. I believe we have Director Mokinson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is consideration of a resolution approving admission of the City of Millbrae into a joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority. Effectively, it is approving membership in, in the organization. Next slide, please. So, um, anytime a governmental entity, the state of California, for example, that is outside of the municipal, of a municipal agency that intends to sell or issue bonds, uh, they're required to get approval by the local municipality. Um, we have a project on the agenda this evening that has applied for funding utilizing tax exempt revenue bond financing through the California Municipal Finance Authority. So in order for the California Municipal Finance Authority, the CMFA, to issue bonds for the subject project on the agenda this evening, it's necessary for the City Council to first approve a joint exercise of powers agreement. It's identified in the resolution before you on this item, which would give them authority, uh, to potentially issue bonds in the jurisdiction of the City of Millbrae. By approving the agreement this evening, the city would not take on any debts, liabilities or obligations of the California Municipal Finance Agency. It's simply, uh, the joint exercise of powers agreement. Next slide. The CMFA is a public entity. Um, there are no costs associated with membership. Membership does not entail any financial liability to the city and participation does not constitute indebted, indebtedness in any form. Uh, over three hundred and twenty municipalities in California are members of the CMFA uh, and have also granted joint exercise of powers agreements for bond issuance in their jurisdiction. We weren't sure if we were members until recently. Apparently we're not. So that's why this item is before you tonight. So, next slide, please. As I said in my, uh, statement before, the city will have no financial, legal or moral obligation or any liability or responsible, responsibility in becoming a member of the CMFA, uh, and the joint exercise of powers agreement. As a member of the CMFA, there are benefits. The city would receive a portion of the issuance of any fees, of reimbursing the city for the processing of any bonds that might occur in our jurisdiction. Membership has no recurring cost to the city or fee and our membership may be withdrawn with a written notice at any time. Outside of holding a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, a TFR hearing, which is a bond hearing, uh, adopting the resolution and executing this joint exercise of powers agreement with the CMFA, there is no other participation of the city required. Next slide, please. And so with that, those are my disclaimers, my statements. Um, we recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution to join the CMFA through the joint exercise of powers agreement. Happy to answer any questions. We also have with us this evening, Anthony Stubbs. He is a representative here of the CMFA this evening.
Okay, so, all right, I'm just going to ask the first question. I know it's on the, um, staff report, but I just, for the benefit of the public. This does, or does it, does it, does it not have any budgetary contributions affecting our budget at all whatsoever?
Membership, uh, the joint exercise of power agreement has no effect on the budget whatsoever.
So it does not cause City Millbrae anything?
Absolutely. It costs us nothing.
All right, I just want to make sure that I get that first question upfront. Um, anybody else? I'm going to open up to the council for questions and comments. Councilmember Nguyen?
So I know thirteen oh one Broadway is one of the projects. Do we have any other projects associated with this?
At the moment, no. We don't have any other projects that have any bond issuance in the past. We did, uh, we did have a similar bond with a, with a different agency for, um, the Rollins, uh, over at the station area. That was some years ago, uh, but no.
Thank you. Question is, is it required, is this bond required in order for thirteen oh one Broadway, which is a one hundred percent affordable, um, building, residential building? Is that, is this bond required in order for that project to move forward?
I think it might be best to answer that question in the next agenda item when that comes forward, not, not to, but, but effectively, I would leave that to the applicant to...
Okay, fair enough. All right. Um, if there's no more questions or comment from this council, I'd like to take public comment on this item. Is there any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do not have a speaker slip for this item and also no hands or raise online for this item.
Okay, last call for public comment. Seeing none, and bring it back to the council. Uh, if there's no final comment, I can entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We're going to move approval from the Vice Mayor Holliver. We have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
Agenda item number eleven passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you very much. Now that brings us to item number eight, which is to open up the public hearing. Uh, the item before us is item number eight is a public hearing to consider the issuance of bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, uh, in support of a qualifying residential project at thirteen oh one Broadway. Mr. Andrew Mokinson.
So Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a bond hearing. Um, next slide, please. Give you some details in the background. This, uh, this hearing, uh, relates to the ninety-seven unit affordable housing project at thirteen oh one Broadway. Uh, the project was, uh, entitled by the Planning Commission on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four pursuant to Senate Bill three thirty and also State Density Bonus Law. The state of California awarded, uh, the bond allocation to the project on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And the project's application has been approved by the CMFA. I should point out that the ninety-seven unit affordable housing project, it helps implement our, it implements our housing element. It is, um, sites inventory two in the housing implement, in, in the housing element. So, uh, the approval of the bond this evening, uh, is a public benefit to the City of Millbrae by furthering, uh, the housing element and, uh, contributing to, to the addition of affordable housing in our city. So I want to point that out as a background. Um, as per the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty-two, which is called TFR, and that is a federal law, uh, through the IRS Code. In order for a bond to qualify as a tax exempt bond, a public hearing must be held by the jurisdiction where the project is located. That would be here in Millbrae. Um, this would allow the California Municipal Finance Association to issue the tax exempt bonds within our jurisdiction. Um, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on a nonprofit organization's proposed use of a tax exempt bond pursuant to federal IRS Code. Next slide, please. So the developer has applied to, as I said before, the California Municipal Finance Authority and has been approved, uh, awarded by the state, the issuance of tax exempt financing for the project up to eighty-five thousand, or I'm sorry, eighty-five million dollars. Um, the proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement and equipping of the project. Holding the bond hearing tonight provides members of the community to speak in favor or against the use of tax exempt bonds for the financing of the project within the municipal jurisdiction of Millbrae. As I said, uh, the CFMA held a board meeting on the ninth, twenty twenty-four, uh, on regarding the application and the state approved the bond allocation to the project on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. Um, the, now I'm going to fill you in on the details on the debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA is the sole responsibility of the borrower. That is the applicant for the thirteen oh one Broadway project. There is no obligation or responsibility to the city with regards to repayment. The city will bear no cost in the issuance of this debt, nor will it have any bearing on the city's debt limit or credit rating. Bearing on the city's finances. Um, the California Municipal Finance Association will share a portion of the issuance fee with the city. So there is a benefit to us to recoup our costs, uh, for hosting these and for our, our administrative costs related to processing, which is approximately twenty thousand dollars, uh, of our costs. Next slide, please. Um, and as I said earlier, um, this, uh, this bond, approval of this bond and issuance of the bond furthers our housing element. It is in the interest of the city. Um, it helps us with our affordable housing goals. Uh, and it implements, uh, the housing element as this is a site, housing inventory site number two in our adopted housing. And so for those reasons, um, we will host the bond hearing and take public comments tonight. Um, and we recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of the bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of the borrower, uh, or a partnership created by the developer for the financing, refinancing, uh, or refinancing of the acquisition, construction, improvement and equipping, uh, equipping of the project.
All right.
With that, happy to answer questions. We also have Anthony Stubbs here from the CMFA as well as the applicant for thirteen oh one Broadway, Gene Broussard.
Okay, thank you, Director. So my first question earlier, uh, when we're looking at item eleven. So is this bond required in order for this project at thirteen oh one Broadway to move forward?
I'm going to have, um, Mr. Stubbs.
Don't go away.
Hello, Anthony Stubbs with the California Municipal Finance. It, it absolutely is. This type of financing, affordable housing requires, uh, low income housing tax credit.
Yep.
In order to receive those tax credits.
Okay, all right. And the developer will be paying, will be responsible to pay for this bond?
Exactly. It's, it's, it's a private, you know, between the developer and a private lender.
Okay, all right, very well. So it's a way for private developer to get public financing on, uh, publicly benefited project. All right, very well. Um, questions and comment from this council? Anyone? Councilmember Nguyen?
So it's great that, uh, Millbrae doesn't seem to be, we don't have to pay for this, but, uh, is there still risk associated with this? Like, are there potentials for the city to incur debts, like if something unforeseen happens?
No, uh, like, like any type of private financing, it, it's the same thing as if, uh, private homeowner took out a mortgage that he's not responsible for. This would be between the borrower and the...
Would the city have to, uh, work with you on this or was it, is it completely managed by?
No, again, it would be completely managed by borrower and...
Thank you.
Okay, all right. If there's no questions of council, um, I would take public comment and then we can bring it back, uh, for, for the discussion. First public comment on this item is Neil Delander.
Evening, Mayor.
Yes.
City council members and city staff. My name is Nelson Lander and I'm a representative of Carpenters Local two seventeen of San Mateo County that covers the area of Millbrae. I understand that we're here for approving the bonds tonight for the project of thirteen oh one Broadway. I would ask if we could table this item for another meeting until we get some labor standards for protection of workers to be on this project. The reason why is they don't have any protection for workers on this property and Franklin will care about the local labor in the City of Millbrae. These workers will be exploited here in Millbrae on the daily by low road contractors that don't pay living wages, doesn't give access to affordable healthcare and doesn't participate in apprenticeships that train workers how to do the job professionally and safely. How is that good for the community? It's crazy for the City of Millbrae to let this proceed knowing the project could be, uh, become a crime scene. So I'm not saying let's not get housing built. I understand the need for housing is important. All I'm asking is that we could postpone the approval of these bonds to give incentive for the developers to include contractors that actually believe in that workers deserve being taken care of instead of subjects to exploitation. We call the city to engage fully with the community to consider local workers before taking this vote. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Next speaker, Darren Clark.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Darren Clark. I'm a representative of Carpenter's Local two seventeen of San Mateo County, uh, covering the area of Millbrae as well. We are here tonight because we believe this TFR hearing may give greater consideration to the public benefit this project represents. The city should not move forward with the vote until this has happened. Carpenter's Local two seventeen has serious concerns about whether the project truly benefits local workers, particularly due to the involvement of Pacific West Communities. In April twenty twenty-four, Department of Industrial Relations determined that Santa Cruz Pacific Associates, a related entity of Pacific West Communities, failed to comply with legal wage requirements on a residential project in Santa Cruz. At the federal level, there is also an ongoing unfair labor practice investigation into Pacific West builders. Our union has been embedded in this community for many years, advocating for fair wages, good jobs and responsible developments. Given the serious concerns surrounding Pacific West Communities, we believe it is only right that the city fully engage with our union and the local workforce before proceeding with the vote on approval of the bonds. We call on the city to do the right thing, ensure public, that public benefit includes strong protections for local workers. That means delaying this vote until meaningful engagement with the community has taken place. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. All right. So at this time, I'd like to bring the developer up, um, if you, if you have any opportunity to, um, address some of the public comments, if you like.
Hi, good evening, uh, council and members and mayor. My name is Gene Broussard, um, with AMG and Associates, the applicant. Um, I, I heard a few of the comments. I just want to address a few of them. Like, um, a lot of big private developers, we go out to bid, like anyone. If you have a home and want to get a home built and you hire a contractor, contractor goes up, puts it out to bid, gets a few different prices for lumber, et cetera. We found on a large, a lot of our larger projects, a lot of the subcontractors selected, in fact, are unions, union wages, right? And, um, we love, we love union labor. A lot of the labor on this project will be local labor because the submarket just kind of gravitates to the west side here. And, uh, yeah, that's it. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have about it. We're excited about the project. We've been working with staff for a long time. We've made a lot of changes, as you know, over the years to improve the project. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, all right. Any questions from this council? No?
Mr. Mayor, um...
City Manager?
So, so a couple things to clarify.
All right.
And hopefully this helpful. The, the action of the city council is not to issue the bonds. Um, it's just simply allowing another governmental agency to issue bonds within the jurisdictional authority of the City of Millbrae. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then I believe legal counsel, if, if the city council would like to, uh, entertain a response regarding the prevailing wage, um, issue in question.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, so the City Attorney's Office, uh, did, uh, receive and review the letter from the Carpenters Union.
Right.
Um, and we believe that the, the letter basically states that the, the City Council does have discretion uh, whether or not to approve the TFR tax exempt bond. However, that is distinguishable from the city's, um, ministerial approval, which was given at the Planning Commission under SB three thirty. Uh, in that case, the city was more constrained in its approval, but the, here, the City Council has the discretion whether or not to approve the tax exempt bonds being issued. The IRS statute requires a public hearing as we're having and, um, the public benefit to local workers, which is referenced in the letter. We are not aware that that is a legal requirement for a TFR bond hearing. Rather, it is something that the, the City Council may consider in whether or not to approve, approve of the bond issuance. And the democratic nature of the TFR procedures is inherent in this public hearing process, which you are undergoing right now. We believe that the union letter, um, inciting to a court opinion from Marin Superior Court, it misconstrues that opinion, uh, by taking the judge's statement out of context. There, the, the court referred to public approval, which was not about the labor issue, but was referring to the fact that the Board of Supervisors in their vote on whether to approve the bond issuance. Um, in that case, um, not all of the supervisors realized that they had discretion. And so I just want to remind the council that they do have discretion. And also, uh, with respect to the prevailing wages, uh, as detailed in the staff report, the City Attorney's Office has researched this and has advised the developer that, um, prevailing wages are likely to be triggered on the undergrounding, uh, to the extent that it will cost over six hundred thousand dollars. So there will be some public benefit there. Um, and the developer understands that they are... And the developer understands that they are responsible for any prevailing wages on the undergrounding. We do not believe that there is prevailing wages required for the overall project aside from the undergrounding, because that is a separate and distinct part of the project. And no public funds are being used for that part of the project. It's not, it's an add-on component, the undergrounding. It's not part of a single integrated project. And there is the reimbursement agreement, which you will consider next, and that would include a waiver and indemnification by the developer for prevailing wages. So in summary, as long as the city council understands that it does have discretion whether or not to approve the bond issuance, we do not believe there are any legal concerns.
Thank you for the thorough analysis. Anything else, City Manager?
No, Mr. Mayor. We're here to answer questions, as this decision could also relate to our production of housing under arena numbers and implementation of our adopted and certified housing element and the state mandate for local municipalities to produce housing. So we'll be able to answer those questions and entertain any of that from the city council or the public.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. My first question is, you know, has there been any discussions with our local unions and different trades, in addition to carpenters, in addition to the carpenters? How, you know, if there's any differences, you know, between what you expect to pay on the construction cost versus if you were to engage with the union labor, and how would that affect the viability of your project?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So we have not had any discussions with this labor union. I believe we got the letter last night. So we were unaware that, of the letter until last night. So it is news to us. We, you know, I just kind of came up for this hearing, so we have not had those discussions. As far as like the, you know, I handle a lot of the land use, the entitlements, and then it kind of goes to a construction department that handles a lot of the construction contracts. So I'm not as versed in kind of answering some of those questions. I know loosely some of them, but that's the best I could kind of answer currently. But I'm happy to elaborate on other questions if you have.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's see if any other council member have any questions on it. Personally, I'd like to see a greater dialogue.
Yeah.
You know, between members of our development community, as well as our labor community, so that we can create win-win situation for everyone. I mean, this project does bring about a lot of public benefits, and those benefits could possibly transcend into local jobs and, you know, so that our well-trained labor locally can also be a part of that process. So any other questions or comment from our council? Vice Mayor, go ahead. Go ahead, Vice Mayor, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Rinaldi.
Yeah, I would echo that comment, that I would really recommend a dialogue with the carpenters and other labor unions on this project. Also, obviously, there were concerns about a similar project in the Santa Cruz area. And I'm curious as to what tools maybe the city has in terms of monitoring, you know, wage theft. I know it's difficult, especially on union work or non-pervailing wage-type work, but I'm curious as to what types of tools we have to prevent that from happening.
Okay.
So regarding wage theft, there is no local ordinance for us to monitor that. The state of California does have various agencies that provide oversight on that. On item number nine that's coming up, as the city attorney mentioned, that is a prevailing wage required project, so we will have oversight and reporting from the contractor when it comes to that. But the market rate non-pervailing wage projects, we don't have any participation in, we don't really have any control over that. I mean, minimum wage, of course, and those things, but the state of California has investigators that assist cities in those areas.
Yeah, I mean, is there any way to partner with those agencies to just make sure that workers on the job are aware of those resources that we, you know, that they have?
Yeah, most certainly, Vice Mayor. And we'll make an effort, should this project proceed, to reach out to those state agencies to ensure we have that overview and oversight.
Yeah. You know, I just wanted to circle back to this project, you know. Talked at our last meeting about inclusionary housing requirements, and we're at 15%. If we should go up to 20%, go down to 8% or somewhere. And, you know, I think if you look at the arena numbers, it's not about 8% or 15% or 20%. It's like 57% of the Millbrae regional housing need allocation is at the below-market rate levels. So it's important that we have, if we have a project that's 97 units of all affordable below-market rate housing, I think we need to do what we can to support those projects. Obviously, work with the developers, work with the trades to make sure that they are partners at the table. But I certainly would not want, you know, if this, if this approval does not happen, to then kill the project if they're not able to get that financing, which I'm concerned about, and I'm concerned about what that means for being able to meet our regional housing needs numbers in our housing element, and potentially face litigation from the state. I know they've cracked down on cities that are unable to meet those numbers. So that's kind of where I'm thinking about this, and, you know, this is one of the few developments that we've had that's nearly 100% below-market rate. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you. I'm going to be echoing a lot of what Vice Mayor Holliver had said. This project's very important to us in our housing element. 95 affordable units, 97 total. I'd really hate to see this issue cause a developer to walk away from the project, especially with housing community and development, how important these housing elements are. And in this particular area, the cost of living is very high. So having something that is affordable is very important. My mind, though, is stuck on the prevailing wages. Of course, we want to see all folks that are involved in this project being made whole. Speaking personally, I come from a family that put food on the table because of union labor. I would strongly recommend you guys continue those dialogues and ensure that everyone is made whole. Going back to City Manager Williams, could we get a little bit more clarification why the onsite project of 1301 Broadway isn't, doesn't have to necessarily fall underneath prevailing wages versus the other item on item number nine, which is utility reimbursement, which is underground lines around the property? I think that would be helpful for not only the public, but the council.
I can answer that question. Thank you, Councilmember Rinaldi. So the prevailing wages requirement is triggered when there is public funding for a project. And so since, aside from the undergrounding, it is being privately financed, there is no prevailing wages requirement under state law.
Thank you for reiterating it. It's really helpful. So closing comment here before I yield back, recommendation is to work strongly with these unions to make sure they're made whole and that those workers are safe on the job.
All right. Any other comment or questions from the council? All right. The way I see this is that they're both important to the city of Millbrae and to all of us, right? Affordable housing is important. It's 100% affordable, 97 units. It's, we're thankful to have it. We want it to be successful. We want it coming out of the ground, and we want them done as soon as possible. And it also goes to, you know, some of the labor unions' questions and comments that were heard today. We want to make sure, you know, all these dialogues gets to continue, when we just got the letter yesterday. Perhaps a little bit of time to let you work and have a, to have a greater dialogue with some of the labor union, and then perhaps come back in a couple of weeks to, hopefully you get some of these issues worked out. I think that might be beneficial to everybody, if this is something that the council can consider. We want, again, we want to support the project, we want it to succeed, and we want it to succeed in a way that is collaborative amongst everybody.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on a few of the comments that you all raised, so thank you for the comments. So we are happy to have a dialogue with the union. Obviously, it's new. Within the last 24 hours, we just learned about it. I'll say a few things. So we received an award from the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee in December, which means that we have to close, we have accepted that award. And so we have to close on the bonds and the whole transaction with permits in hand by the end of May. I think it's like early June, end of May, to start construction on the project. It has to happen for us. Otherwise, the project's dead. I think everyone in the council here knows how difficult, how expensive land is, how complex the land use regulatory environment is, although the state is making it easier. And I just want to say that we have to, we definitely have to proceed with this project that, you know, as is. As far as like union labor on the entire job, that has happened on some of our projects when we have a large soft source of funding, other from the state. This is a project wherein we don't have any city funds, notwithstanding the small undergrounding, which is a separate item for the outside of the city or the property lines. It's all kind of on the city public right-of-way, but we don't have any city funds or any other large soft funding sources on this project. So it gets a bit complicated. I mean, we're happy to have a dialogue, but we are fully committed to this project, and everything's full steam ahead, because we have a very short window to close. Otherwise, we lose the credits, as everyone knows. It's a very competitive process. Other affordable housing developers are competing against each other for these credits to build the housing. So we submitted like eight to 10 applications. I think we only got one or two. This is in the August round, and so we have, the award was in December, as I mentioned, so it's a quick timeline to get everyone on board to do this. And we're working actively with all the city departments, trying to get permits in time. So I just want to kind of lay that out there.
Yeah, I, you know, fully understood. Being in the real estate realm myself, I understand how expensive carrying costs is.
Yes.
Property tax isn't going any, isn't going away anytime soon, and it's not getting lower. So that's why I think if, how about, you know, if you commit to just having a dialogue, you know, with some of the concerns that were heard today, that's not to say one way or the other. I'm just saying that there needs to be a dialogue among, you know, all of you, so that we can address this, maybe perhaps to a date certain, say, in the next council meeting, two weeks from now, and then bring it back. Hopefully, we'll have some resolution by then, and then we can move forward together. You think that's doable in terms of your timeline, the commitment in May?
I'll have to check. It wouldn't be me having the dialogue, it'd be our principals having the dialogue, right? So I'd have to get back to you. I know that this is, again, as kind of city staff mentioned, this is really kind of a separate item related to the issuance of the bonds or the Tefra in front of you right now. I think it's, it is a completely separate item from my understanding. We're just talking about the tax exempt, to be tax exempt bonds, you actually have to have this hearing and be noticed. So again, we believe that the wages is a separate matter. We're happy to have a dialogue either way, but I just want to say that I believe that it's a separate matter.
Understood. What does the council feel about it? State, my opinion?
I'd like to second your opinion, Mayor Phong. I think two weeks' time to have some dialogue, constructive dialogue with the union to see what common ground we can meet at would be helpful for this project to move it along. Most city of Millbrae really understands how important this project is, and they're really fully committed to it. But at the same time, we need to recognize that these folks that operate in this union are members of our community, and we have to look out for them as well, too. So I'd like to second your recommendation.
Okay, very well. All right, Vice Mayor?
No, I agree with that. I think that's a good solution. And obviously, we're very sensitive to your timeline. We want to make sure that we are adhering to that and that you're able to meet all of the deadlines for the project. But, yeah, it is important that these community partners are a part of the process as well. So thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Nguyen, Councilmember Riley, anything?
Yeah, I agree with that statement. I think that there needs to be a dialogue so that everyone is made whole.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
We are all supporting your project. We want our Millbrae have a beautiful house, and for everyone. Sometime, we like to have our local union and the laborers have something. So please find some way to work with them. When we go out, we always tell our family members, we shopping in Millbrae, we eat in Millbrae, we shopping in Millbrae, we're in Millbrae. So please work with them, have dialogue. Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue this item to a date certain, which is two weeks, 14 days from now, in the next second council meeting in February.
February 25th for the record.
25th, okay, very well. And our encouragement here is, first of all, the council is very committed to the success of this project, just as we are committed to the success of our labor union who built San Mateo County as well. So we encourage a very engaging dialogue between all of you, and hopefully by 14 days from now, we're ready to get it rolling.
And Mayor, I'd clarify also the building trades council, as well as the carpenters.
Absolutely. Bring all the stakeholders involved in terms of having that greater discussion. Make sure everybody's on board. All right, so that's my motion.
Happy to second it.
A second from councilmember Ronaldy. Any other final comments? City, city attorney, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Senator Lee, Mayor. Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronaldy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliver?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
Item number eight is continue to February 25th, 2025, city council meeting by a motion by the vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, adopt, adoption of a resolution approving a utility reimbursement agreement for 1301 Broadway between the city of Millbrae and AMG and Associate LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just introduce our community development director, Mr. Andy Mogensen, for the staff presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening. Next slide, please. So as we said earlier in the evening, the planning commission reviewed the entitlements for the 1301 Broadway project, the design review permit, conditional use permit, and exceptions pursuant to Senate Bill 330 and state density bonus law for the 97-unit affordable housing development on August 19th, 2024. That is the date it was entitled by the city. The six-story project is located on a 0.67 acre site at 1301 Broadway. It's at the corner of Broadway and Ludeman Lane. The approved project is currently under building permit review. It is anticipated to break ground the spring contingent upon funding. Next slide, please. Now, I just want to give a, a brief overview of this project. Obviously, as I said, it's been entitled by the planning commission, so this is a refresher. I'm simply just describing what the project is. It was approved through a streamlined administrative process, I'm sorry. It was approved through an administrative streamlined process. So this isn't a hearing on the project itself, but it's just to brief the council. So I'm going to give you an overview of it. So it's a, it's a 97-unit dedicated affordable housing project. Indoor parking spaces on two levels, 63 spaces. It's a broad mix of dedicated units. It has 30, 30 studio units, 10 one-bedroom, 2, 32-bedroom units and 27 three-bedroom units, ranging in size from 411 to 1,018 square feet. Of those units, 10 of the units are being dedicated to very low-income eligible residents. 66 are dedicated to the low-income brackets and 19 are moderate. It also includes two onsite managers who will be living at the property. The project qualified for development incentives and concessions through state density bonus law as an affordable housing project. State law precludes local development standards when the criteria are met. So as a, as a qualifying housing development under the state density bonus law, it was eligible for an 80% density bonus. The applicant did not use the full density bonus that they were eligible for. They developed this project with a 75% density bonus for 97 units, 46 dwelling units per acre. And under state density bonus law, it was eligible for five waivers and concessions from our local development standards. These included waivers for building height, from building height setbacks, minimum parking, and also from undergrounding overhead utilities. So they are not required to underground the overhead utilities, which is the item that we have before us tonight. Talk a little bit more about that. So as I said, state law precludes our local development standards when the affordability criteria is met. The qualifying projects must still comply with all building safety and fire codes. Next slide, please. Municipal Code Section 8.30 requires all developers for new projects to underground their utilities. This project has overhead utilities only along Ludeman Lane. There are no overhead utilities along Broadway. The project is eligible for a concession from that requirement for the undergrounding of utilities under state density bonus law. As a, as a requirement of that, they do have to demonstrate that the utility undergrounding is an actual identifiable cost reduction and that that concession would allow the project to provide the proposed. There has to be a nexus between the cost of what, what they would otherwise have to do and the cost of developing the project. The planning commission was concerned about that. They directed the city to work with the applicant on a reimbursement agreement considered, which has to be considered and approved ultimately by the city council, which is why we're here this evening. Next slide, please. Just to give you an idea of where those, the overhead utilities are, you can see it here in this picture. This is an image of Ludeman Lane. You can see the Pancake House in the distance. That's, that's the intersection of Broadway and Ludeman Lane. Further downhill, you can see El Camino Real. So we're just talking about this, this overhead utility line. Next slide. And to give you an overhead of, image of where, where that overhead utility line is located, this image showing where the, where the work would occur. Next slide, please. Utility lines are, as I said, they're otherwise required to be placed underground. This is a life safety requirement. We require this normally for fire protection as well as community aesthetics. And of course, it's on the top of everyone's mind or the recent fires in Los Angeles. There's a big concern about overhead utility lines. So we see this as, as something that's really important that should be done. And so we looked at this and the source of funds for the reimbursement agreement to underground the utilities can come through the city's Affordable Housing Fund. It is an eligible fund for supporting affordable housing projects. It can be used in support of affordable housing developments like this. The allocation of funds from the Affordable Housing Fund to help underground these utilities would substantially advance the city's interest in, in housing element as adopted, helping enable and allow for the construction of new affordable housing and also comply with the city's municipal code. So we had the applicant prepare a cost estimate for the work. The cost estimate came to $855,874. We had a third-party review of that cost estimate and we found it to be adequate. Next slide, please. And so we talked a little bit about prevailing wage requirements. Anytime an amount exceeds 2% or 600,000, it triggers California Labor Code, trigger the prevailing wage requirement. So if the applicant utilized, and again, this is a proposed reimbursement of funds, he was, if he reimbursed funds more than that 600,000 amount, then it could, then it would, they would be responsible for complying with any prevailing wage laws over that amount. In order to receive the reimbursement that's proposed tonight, the developer would have to, the developer has an agreement before you tonight that requires them to provide us with a very detailed itemization of the actual costs incurred, including invoices and supporting documentation, and they would have to submit that within 30 days of the undergrounding project's completion. We would review that before issuing any reimbursement to the applicant. Without this funding, the overhead utility lines would otherwise remain. This, because this comes from the, the city's Affordable Housing Fund, it would not impact the city's general fund for this reimbursement agreement. As of now, we, we have enough adequate funds in our Affordable Housing Fund to pay for these. And the Affordable Housing Fund comes from linkage fees that new development pays through our development impact fees. So every new development in the city of Millbrae has to pay in for commercial developments. They have to pay into this linkage fee. There is a development impact fee that we pay into Affordable Housing if they're not able to provide the units on site. Of course, we always try to get residential development to do that. And the funds primarily come from commercial development through that linkage fee. Next slide, please. And so with that, we recommend that the, the city council adopt a resolution tonight approving a utility reimbursement agreement between the city of Millbrae and AMG and Associates in support of undergrounding utilities adjacent to the 1301 Broadway housing project in an amount not to exceed $855,874 and 21 cents, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Here, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Questions, comment from this council? Councilmember Wen?
So what happens if the actual cost is less than the estimate or say even exceeds the estimate? What, what would we do in that case?
Well, this agreement is capped at $855,000 as cited here. They certainly can request a reimbursement for less than that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't believe I have any speaker slip on this item. I don't see any hand raised either. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so closing public comment on this item. Anyone else? I mean, I see certainly, I certainly see some benefit to getting power line undergrounded. I love the entire city to have our power line being underground. These things don't need to be, don't need to be seen and they certainly need to work, but you know, and then having more of these overhead power lines with extreme weather, it just, you know, it's just put to be problematic when you've got high wind and, and storm. So I certainly would like to see these things being underground to the extent possible. So I'll be supportive of it. Anyone else have any comments on this? Councilmember Ronaldy?
Thank you, Mayor Fong. Just a quick question, or not question, but a couple of quick comments regarding this item. I think it shows commitment from the developer to work with the city of Millbrae. They've been collaborative throughout the whole process. I understand need for housing in the state. I understand HCD and the pressure they put on local communities such as ourselves to fulfill those arena numbers. I also understand that the location of the facility itself, where it's going to be, has a lot of exemptions that it carries. So there were a lot of concessions being made and for the public. Just so you understand how great the developer's been with us. Reality was the parking situation was very bleak when we started this process. And as of today, we have, I believe it's 67 parking spots that are guaranteed with a.
Interior parking spots in one and a half level ground.
And wasn't there a commitment to see perhaps if they could pencil out to put mechanical lifts to increase it to, I believe, about 80?
Yeah, they'll be examining that if it's feasible.
Sure. And then there was also the aesthetics on the outside of the building as well. They made some concessions there.
Yeah, they had, they did. This application that was entitled in August is enhanced over their prior application under.
And I really commend them for working with the city regarding this reimbursement to make a commitment on prevailing wages. I have full faith that, that we're going to move forward on this project in good company. So thank you. I yield back.
All right. Any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
One, one last comment, Mayor. Sorry, one thing I didn't include, just for the public to recognize this, that these funds for the reimbursement are not coming out of our general fund. This is being funded by new development impact fees, as was said earlier. So I want to be very clear about that. As these new developments are happening within our city, the city's collecting fees that are offsetting some of these costs, such as this reimbursement for this project of 1301 Broadway. Thank you.
Can I just ask, follow up on that? So I spoke with the city manager earlier today. I was curious, what was the fund balance? And he said it was about 1.3 million in the Affordable Housing Fund, right?
It's 1.97, 1.978 million as of February 1st.
So the payment of this coming from the Affordable Housing Fund or is it the impact fee? Which one?
Well, they are the same. It's the Affordable Housing Fund, yes.
Okay. Okay. And I assume Longfellow and Alexandria have not paid into that yet or they have?
They would have paid into it because they are, they are.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
City managers, you have any, you have any additions? No, Mr. Mayor. Okay, all right. So be there as it may. Any motions?
Motion to move forward.
Okay, all right. Any second?
One second.
All right, sounds good. Any final comments? City clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronaldy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oliver?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
Item number nine passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. Look forward to getting rid of some of those power lines. Item number 10, Self Help for the Elderly Semi-Annual Updates. And city manager, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ms. Karen Lamb, Self Help for the Elderly Director, and Mr. Kenneth Sito, Program Coordinator for Self Help for the Elderly for this semi-annual update and presentation. And before she starts, I would just like to take the opportunity to.
Please.
Just really thank Self Help and I know the council will comment, but we have such a great partnership and the data that you'll, you'll see tonight just, just kind of proves that partnership and the strengthening that we have with Self Help every year. So just like to commend them on the great work.
Excellent. It's good to have you.
Thank you, thank you. Can you see me behind here?
I can see you just fine.
Hello, Mayor Fong, Vice Mayor Oliver. Hello, council members and staff. Thank you very much for inviting us for our presentation. As he said, my name is Karen Lamb and I'm the Director of Nutrition and Senior Centers at Self Help for the Elderly. And I'm happy to bring this presentation for our semi-annual update. So, slide. So we at, in Millbrae, at the Millbrae Senior Center here, actually right above, we have a congregate meals program where we provide also not only meals, but also activities and classes, nutrition education and consultation. So we serve seniors 60 years and older and adults with disabilities. And we do this five days a week, Monday through Friday. Next slide. We also have a home-delivered meal service and that is also centralized here at San Mateo Center and it's, or actually at the Millbrae Center. And we also have one in the San Mateo Center, which is down in San Mateo. We serve four homebound Millbrae residents daily for a total of 506 meals. Next slide. So since in July through December, which is six months last year, we had 101 new clients join the senior lunch program. So we have been very, we've been doing very well in terms of attracting new clients every year. Slide. So the demographics for our seniors is, according to the 2022 Census Report, for Millbrae, 27% of Millbrae residents are seniors age 60 and over. And based on this data, there's a growing need for senior services. So currently we have a total of 274 seniors who come to our program. Slide. We served 4,698 total meals, which is, let's just say 4,700 meals. And I will say that according, when we were given the contract for meal service, our total number of meals was 5,500 meals to serve. So in six months, we served over 4,600 meals. And luckily, you know, we were very happy to, to, to find, was it the city of, of the county of San Mateo? I'm sorry, it's the county of San Mateo gave us extra meals so that we could serve more seniors for the rest of this year. Our major activities and classes are ma, are mostly health and physicals related. And we, our number one class is the line dance classes, followed by chair exercise. And so we're very happy to say that our seniors are very, actually very healthy and continue to be. Next slide. In addition to those activities and classes, our classes are education informational and we had a group of Alzheimer workshops, which you would wonder, you know, do people really want to know, but they do. They want to know how to prevent it, how they can deal with it and what to do, how they can take care of it. But in addition, we also have free health screenings, which were presented this year by Sunrisers Dental Health Services and Walgreens Pharmacy nearby. And I will say Kenneth, who's right there in the, in the middle, he has a lot of, he has actually a lot to do with our senior services and the health, the health classes that we do get. Next slide, please. Some of the activities and classes are provided by OCA, which is the Organization of Chinese Americans, San Mateo's Age Friendly Coalition, the Fall Prevention Program, Able Closet Medical Equipment Loan Program. And then services we also are, offer are Adult Protective Services, Cal Money Smart Program, information and resources. And we're very happy to always, and have others, you may say have other organizations come if they'd like to present also to our seniors. In September of last year, we had a mid-autumn Moon Festival Annual Walkathon and that was a kind of a hybrid, it was a hybrid walkathon being online and also in San Mateo Central Park. Slide, please. Again, as I mentioned before, our health workshops are probably our number one, you might say, number one seller, followed by people want to know more about the community resources and services. Next slide. And here are some photos from what's happened during the year and these include our activities, health workshops and our celebrations. Next slide. Next slide. I just got to go through, these are just, again, health topics included 10 warning signs of Alzheimer's, reading food labels, portion control and wine-based eating, just move, fall prevention, healthy living for your brain and body and health plan information resources. Just some celebrations. So thank you to everyone. Thank you very much for, you know, helping us make this a success. And yes, we do really appreciate the partnership that we have with you. Thank you.
That's great. Do you have a few words for us or you're good?
So good evening, everybody. So actually in the future, I just want to say we will have more of the information and the research. Kind of like we will cooperate with the different organizations such as YMCA and AMG or American Medical Group. And we also will have the field trip. Actually, we have a field trip in every quarter. So our next field trip will be on the April and the April future, we're going to the San Francisco, actually. Or we have the Skyline Wheel in San, in Fish and Wolf, actually. So it's kind of exciting and we look forward to bring more fun to the, in there also.
Great. Just, first of all, I wanted to thank Self Help for all you do. And I just want to kind of bring about, sort of paint a backdrop because I started this job almost five years ago in 2020, when we were in the pandemic. And I still remember at the deep of our pandemic that all the seniors are homebound it. You know, they, they need language assistance. They don't know how to get, not only do they not know how to get their meal, they don't know how to get their medications, they don't know how to use a smartphone, many of them, right? And, you know, because of Self Help, you came in and you start delivering meal and, and look at some of the report that now, some of the photos and how vibrant our senior community is because of the programs that you put together, the opportunity that you bring and allow them to come out and allow them to, to engage and be active in the community again and to get rid of those isolations. That's important. And we have a very vibrant senior community today, thanks to a lot of the effort that all of you put in. And we just cannot thank you enough. And we just, I, I look forward to seeing more of programs that you can bring in so that, you know, as an age-friendly city, we have a sizable age, the more senior adult, I will say. Having these programs is extremely important to them because, you know, that helps them get rid of the isolation. Because, you know, that helps them get rid of the isolations, have them interact more with the youth, you know, there's partnering with the youth with their technology program that has been hugely successful. I remember that, some of those weekends, and some of our youth are, they always get slapped for using their smartphone a lot, right? But, you know, when they come to working with the seniors, they're actually being encouraged to be on the phone. Because it helps the senior get in touch with their grandchildren. So it's just wonderful to see how these programs has turned into a smashing success and bring a lot of benefit to the seniors who are in our community. So thank you for all you do. Anyone else on this council? Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. And it's amazing to see how this program has grown and flourished here in Millbrae. I remember it used to be, I think, two, three days a week. And there was a request at the time, and maybe it could be five days. And it's like, it could really scale up to five days. But it looks like it has, and it's grown bigger than ever. I think kind of the one ask that we had, you know, several years ago, and I don't know if there's been any progress on this, is if we can utilize some of the local restaurants that we have here in Millbrae to help support, support the restaurants. And I don't know if there's been any update on that. I know at the time, there were questions about nutrition licensing requirements that they had. But I'm curious if there's any update about being able to utilize some of our local restaurants here in Millbrae for the program.
Alexandra, who is our coordinator at the Millbrae Center, she has been reaching out to the restaurants, particularly around here, you know, this area right here. And we are still talking to them in terms of, a lot of times, it's a price point, I will say. That's probably the biggest one. However, we do encourage, what we're trying to do is trying to find a way that we can invite them in, you know, to be with our seniors more so that hopefully, you know, then we could do something in which we can work together as well. So she has been reaching out to them.
Glad to hear that, and I'd like to see our staff to make those, facilitate those connections. And, you know, yeah, it sounds like there's the pricing issue. If there's any licensing or anything like that, if we could help make the connections to the county health department. But it would be really great if this is both a program that is supporting our seniors and also supporting our local businesses here in Millbrae. Thank you.
Actually, we have, we have been, just as I say, we have been keeping in touch with the local businesses, the small businesses. And in, we, in a certain, like, small, maybe celebration, maybe Thanksgiving, actually, we go to the Chang Heng in Millbrae, right?
On Broadway.
Yeah, the one, yeah, actually, we purchased the turkey for the, like, for the senior, actually.
And the roasted pigs.
Yes, so we have tried to, like, connect, because we all know sometimes it's difficult, maybe we still need time to contact, how the health issue. However, the senior, when they see the turkey and see the pig, they were very happy. So we try our best to bring everything, bring this local business and bring our service close together. We'll try working on that, and hopefully more cooperation will be on the, in the future.
Glad, glad to hear that, thank you very much.
Yeah, everything is excellent. And particularly, I was thankful and enjoy every year with the Lunar New Year and some of the major festivals, whenever I come in to share a little bit of time with the senior, I always being pulled into the dance floor, including the chief and many of the staff. And the only comment I like to make is that we have, the next time, invite our City Manager to come in to do the dance as well. Just to make sure that he gets to show off all his, you know, well-practiced dance moves in front of our seniors.
I don't know if I'm worthy of Dancing with the Stars quite yet, Mayor, but I'll try.
So, so just, you know, just one comment, and before next time we come back for funding, make sure he gets to an opportunity to dance with our seniors. Anything else from this council? And also thank all the council members and all the staff who participated in their program, celebrate with our seniors serving a meal. You know, just, you know, reaching out to the senior community and letting them know that we care and we're there for you. And, you know, it's just wonderful to see that partnership to flourish to a smashing success. Thank you so very much, Self Help. All right, make a motion. I don't, is there public comment on his item? I don't have any speaker slip, I don't see any hand raised online.
No, Mayor, there are no speaker slip or hands raised.
Okay, closing public comment. And I'd like to make a motion to accept this report from Self Help for the Elderly.
Second?
We have a second from Councilmember Rinaldi. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Hi.
Councilmember Riley.
Hi.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Halliburton.
Hi.
Mayor Feng.
Hi.
Item number 10 passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you, and Happy New Year. All right, moving on to item number 12, study sessions of a city council to receive input on Millbrae citywide objective residential design standards and zoning code amendment. City Manager, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce again Mr. Andy Mogensen, our Director of Community Development, and the team of consultants that has been working on the objective design standards for residential development here in the Millbrae. And as they come up to the podium to start the presentation, I'd just like to put some context, and then they will do this in the presentation. But this is the initial rollout of objective design standards for the city for residential development. State law no longer allows local jurisdictions to use discretionary authority or discretionary review for residential projects. And so approval, since there's no longer discretionary review, the state law requires us to adopt objective design standards for residential. And so this is the work, work in progress. This is the first study session that the city council will hear, what we've been putting together. And again, so this is a study session that we can hear the presentation, roll up our sleeves, hear back from the city council in terms of what's important to you as we progress to the next step. So with that, I'll hand it over to the consulting team, our Planning Manager, Mr. Roscoe Mata, to start the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is David Bergman. Director at Lisa Weis Consulting. Joined the Cidlick, who is a senior associate with our firm. Monica is the principal designer. Wanted to expand on the City Manager's comments just a bit, and to give you some perspective on how we've approached this work. Our goal is to help the city of Millbrae develop standards for residential development that are compliant with state law and preserve the character of the communities within Millbrae that are sensitive to the community's specific conditions and are tailored to meet the feedback that we have been hearing from the community through public outreach sessions, through conversations with the Planning Commission, and through events like this hearing and study session today. We're pleased to present our work to date with an understanding that we will be continuing to receive feedback and have opportunities to continue to tailor a solution that works specifically for the city of Millbrae.
David, good evening, Mayor. The council members, glad to be here tonight to present the work that we've, we've done over the past a little bit more than a year. And, shall I advance the slide? Just tell us. Okay, great, thanks. So tonight, we'll, we'll talk, just do a brief introduction of the project, context, why we're here, what we're doing, and what's going to come out of this project. Talk a little bit about the community outreach that we've done so far. As David mentioned, do a brief overview of our emerging work, the direction so far that the project is taking. And then we look forward to hearing from, from you all. So, next slide, please. So a little bit about the occasion for the project in the first place. As you know, council-directed staff and consultants to initiate the project late last year, primarily, or the year before, primarily to implement the city's adopted policies. There are a number of plans and other policy documents that the city, as you know, continuously implements. A few of this project's key marching orders are, oh. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit out of order here. I'm gonna, can we go back to the last slide? Okay, the next up? And then the next up? Sorry about that. Okay. Sorry about that. So, starting with what's going to come out of this project, we will develop illustrated residential objective design standards for all residential development. So that includes single-family, duplexes, triplexes, and ADUs. Those will be in one booklet. And residential design standards for multifamily and mixed-use residential development, those will be in another design booklet. And then we'll make updates to the zoning code as needed to sort of point to these booklets and to establish a new, a non-discretionary residential review process for all projects, as the City Manager introduced for us. Okay, let's move on to the next slide. Okay, so a few of the key marching orders for our project are a general plan guiding principle, which tells us to preserve and enhance neighborhoods. So specifically, the wording is support the preservation and broadening of the existing housing stock while encouraging innovative housing types, minimizing impacts to Bay views, and promoting safety from wildfires, flooding, sea level rise, and other climate change impacts. So that's a guiding principle. And some policies that follow are, as you can see here, clear and predictable development standards. That's really what we're working on. We've got some other policies related to, the talk a little bit about residential design standards, residential design review, and one that specifically says craft some citywide objective residential design standards. So as you know, the Millbrae zoning code is currently pretty silent on design. So we're developing design standards to essentially supplement the basic development standards of your code, meaning setback, height, FAR, lot coverage, open space. These won't change, but we'll have design standards on top of those. We're also here to bring Millbrae zoning ordinance into compliance with state law. So as I know you're aware, there's been a flood of housing-related legislation from the state level in the last few years. And all of it is in some way an effort to address the statewide housing crisis and to streamlight and facilitate housing production, while at the same time giving local jurisdictions opportunities and tools to regulate design in a way that's, that's right for each community. So key among them is SB 330, which prohibits the city of Millbrae and all other cities from a number of things, but among them, denying any residential project on the basis of subjective standards, meaning the standards by which residential projects are evaluated and if needed, denied. Must be, all standards must be objective in nature. And the state's definition of objective design standards is standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submittal. So that's how we got here to this project. So just a few more words about ODS, Objective Design Standards, if we can move on to the next slide. So it's important that every community identifies what their ODS should address. It's not the same for every community. In general, and in our experience developing objective design standards for cities around California, and the Bay Area especially, ODS should, should really do what's noted on this slide here. They have to acknowledge existing patterns, reflect community input, anticipate density bonus, and now SB 9, projects, implement the policy direction that's in the general plan and housing element, and in general, lend a measure of predictability to the planning process, essentially so that applicants aren't surprised and the process is transparent and impartial. If we think about what this means to the permitting process, historically, projects have been evaluated in a discretionary review process before a design review board or a planning commission. But now SB 330 requires that residential projects have a ministerial path to approval. So objective design standards are essentially a city's opportunity to identify ahead of time what previously would have been discussed through that discretionary process. It's an opportunity to get it in writing and make it known to applicants ahead of time. So objective design standards can and should address a lot of physical design elements. We'll get into a little more detail a few slides ahead. So let's move on to the next slide. Thanks. So we've been at this for over a year now. We've done a lot of community outreach in that time. Let's move to the next slide. So here, this project timeline shows the community engagement efforts in gold at the top, and major project milestones are down below in red. We kicked the project off at the beginning of last year. We published the technical analysis and recommendations report, which are all our initial findings, everything we needed to know to really get rolling. And then we turned to the community. We released an online community questionnaire. We went to a CEAC meeting. We held a community workshop right here in September, and then a study session with the Planning Commission in November. And now we're here before you to conclude the public outreach process. And then we'll submit a complete administrative draft of those two booklets and those code amendments in about a month, followed by a public review draft after staff reviews the admin draft. And then we'll refine that draft with staff and with the community and decision-making bodies throughout the course of the year. So looking specifically at our community engagement efforts that are up at the top in gold, let's move on to the next slide. We got a project website going early last year. We put out regular social media postings. These efforts have really built upon each other. We got a total of seventy-seven respondents to the online questionnaire, the CEAC meeting. We got a lot of great feedback. And a hybrid online and in-person workshop in September also added to that. So all the documentation of these events and the feedback received is written up and linked on our project website under the Resources tab. And I know a lot of that material is in your packet. And we're here tonight to receive final direction. So what did we hear from the community so far? We'll do a quick summary of that. We move on to the next slide. We heard from the community that homes in hilly areas should reflect the terrain, that roof forms should reflect neighborhood context. That's consistent with the guiding principle and the policies of the general plan. That duplexes and small multifamily structures should take the form of large houses rather than small apartment buildings. That entries and landscaping are a priority for the community, and that additions should generally match the original structure. Next slide. We heard about specific styles typical of different areas of the city and where there should be more of an emphasis on landscaping and trees. And again, we heard that we want to emphasize, the community wants to emphasize the architectural styles that are, that are characteristic features of certain areas. Next slide. When it comes to ADUs, a lot of the feedback that we received about ADUs mirrored what we heard about primary structures. Entrances and privacy and the design of open space are very important to the community. We heard that it's important that ADUs match the primary structure in terms of design. That's a standard that's already in your code. And that former driveways should be removed completely. And then, next slide. When it comes to multifamily and mixed-use development, we, we understood that modulated roof forms and facade articulation and landscaping are a high priority and that the community really cares about window design and the quality of building materials and energy efficiency in design and materials. Let's move on to the next slide. So we'll provide a brief look at our emerging standards, as I noted. Note that these are not set in stone. We're looking for your input. I won't go over everything that we've got in the works, but, but the major topics that are really setting the direction of the really setting the direction of the documents that we're developing. So I noted earlier, we'll have two booklets, one for single-family, duplex, triplex, and ADUs. Essentially, that's development that's on the scale of a house. And one for multifamily and mixed-use, or a development that, as we say, is on the scale of a block. This is the working cover and table of contents of that first booklet. So, and then I'll mention again that, in general, the design standards pick up where the development standards leave off. So, starting with standards for building envelope, you can see it's part two of this book. Next slide. So we first looked at some typical homes in different areas of Milbury. Understanding that the policy direction tells us to preserve and enhance neighborhoods and recognize and preserve the neighborhood character, we first wanted to get a sense of what that might mean, that understand that that might mean different things in different areas of the city, or along different rights of way, or smaller areas of the city, not larger neighborhoods, but more contained areas. It might mean different things in flat versus hilly areas. It might mean different things in older versus newer areas of the city, or for additions versus new construction. And we wanted to start by being cognizant of the different typical conditions found throughout the city. And then, next slide. We looked at how some of these typical forms create patterns that may warrant preservation along a block face or in larger areas. And we started to think about how do we define a block face or the larger area that is demonstrative of a particular characteristic feature? How big is that area? And we started by observing, hearing from the community and observing the built form throughout the neighborhoods in Milbury. So, keeping these observations in mind, we started drafting standards for building massing. Next slide. Essentially, that refers to the portions of the facades that are highlighted in this little diagram on the left of the slide. The portions of the facade that are highlighted and their placement with respect to each other. So in some areas, regulating building massing will mean that the whole structure can approach the setback line. Recall, the setback line won't be changing. The whole structure can approach the setback line, like in the upper left, or that the building masting must be broken up to step up with the terrain, or that a portion of the facade must be stepped back from the rest. Only a portion of the building can meet that setback line. Or that the second story must be stepped back entirely from the ground floor. So these images, note, they're all focused on the front of the building, but we're also looking at the same for interior side and side and rear building elevations. Note that the image on the lower right demonstrates an existing standard. I mentioned that the code is very light on design standards. Really, there aren't any. However, there is an existing design standard that requires second stories to be stepped back from the ground floor. So we're reevaluating it and thinking, looking to see where is that appropriate and desired by the community, and where is it inconsistent with existing built form? Keeping in mind that we want to prevent non-conforming conditions, but most importantly, be sensitive to context. Next slide. Plate height also impacts building massing. So those are essentially the distances shown here. So, here on the left. So we're regulating or developing regulations for plate height because this impacts character and has such a marked impact on residential privacy. So we're identifying where and how to limit plate height, whether it's limited by just a simple, a certain number of feet, or in some areas, maybe it is best regulated or best, the limit is best expressed as a function of the ground floor plate height, or maybe in some areas, a second story must be embedded within a pitched roof form, or perhaps the plate height of a second story can only exceed the ground floor plate height by a number of feet that's less than a floor to ceiling, a little bit like what you see on the house on the left of the lower right.
I've got a question. I've got to stop you there for a second. So, you know, you're talking about the ground level plate height limited to 10 feet. Is that, does that apply to both single and two-story building?
That would be the ground...
What, if there's a one-story building, are you going to still limit that to 10 feet?
No.
I think that's the objective design standard that we need to be clear about, because there might be... I've seen single-family homes that are three stories. So, we need to be clear on those as well. I think the maximum height limit right now is 30 feet, if I'm not mistaken?
Right. And we do not anticipate or propose changing that at all. But when you look at a building, depending on the form of the building, typically, the ground floor is legible as such. You see that there's an eve, there's an overhang, there's a step back that tells you, okay, this is the ground floor, and then up above, there's a second floor, maybe a third. And, not in all cases, but in many cases, that plate height is articulated with an eve or some architectural feature. And sometimes it's maybe a parapet height if a second story is stepped back. We want to make sure that it doesn't effectively look like a story and a half or two stories, but it's really one story.
Yeah. And I understand you have not gotten into roof line, but I kind of want to, when you get there, whether or not, how you would treat pitched roof versus flat roof, because I believe that has been a big topic in the past. So that's something that I think we need to address, but I'll let you go on.
No, thank you. And those are so related, it's always tricky to tease those things apart, right? Massing is really so closely related to roof form. So let's move on to roof form. So, the mayor noted, there are all kinds of roof forms throughout Milbury, flat, pitched. The pitch varies by neighborhood. So we want to think, we are developing standards to respond to all of these contexts. In general, we want to require that there be some change in roof form that corresponds with any change in wall plane below, which is to say, avoid just sort of a simple big hat roof that's independent of the plane changes that are happening below. We want to make sure that the pitch is where there is an established pattern of roof pitch, where it doesn't exceed 2 to 12 or 3 to 12, that we limit the pitch. Where there's an established pattern of deep eaves and exposed beams, we want to allow for that. Where there is a pattern that a pitched roof slopes down toward the street, we'd like to make sure that that continues. We have sort of a host of other standards related to roof forms. We're, this, we want to prohibit butterfly roof forms, other roof forms that are just inconsistent with the character and the quality of the homes that we see in Milbury, and get it right by area, right? So it, and it is part of the building envelope chapter, because it is so closely related to height and to where the planes lie with respect to the property line. Let's move on to the next. So getting a little bit finer-grained, the standards will also address entrances, the sort of public-private transition area, and ensure that recesses, that entrances look like entrances, that they're either recessed or covered, that there's a protected area. Make sure that the buildings or the windows have a relationship to the facade, and generally address a facade composition in terms of scale and placement. Closely related to some of the building envelope standards related to privacy and plate height, the windows also will be regulated to protect residential privacy. And some of those standards will be specific to homes in hillside areas where privacy really, it's so much easier for privacy to become an issue, and it has to be dealt with carefully. Let's move on to the next slide. And then, looking at the elements here that we see highlighted on the left, looking around the building in terms of building orientation, garage orientation, where there's an existing pattern of a side entry garage, we would look to maintain that. We'd look to limit paving. You already have some standards related to landscaping and paving. And we would supplement those. We would build from those. So we'd think about landscape species, variety, placement, screening, fences, screening of utilities, and we want to make sure that we're hitting on all the topics that come to mind, that you would like the standards to address. So, moving on, the elements that we're looking at for the design standards are all a bit overlappy. So, when we move on to the next slide here, as we noted earlier, the community has identified, and we touring the city have documented, that there are a number of architectural styles in Milbury neighborhoods. We all know these particular styles. We know their visual vocabulary. And we know that, more than any other homes, it is those structures in particular that adhere to that visual vocabulary that lend the character to our neighborhoods. So, in many cases, the design elements we've looked at on the last few slides, they aren't standalone features. They can't be modified independently without impacting the integrity of the home and its architectural style. And this is important, because it's not the case for every city. Milbury is unique, and that there are styles that are an important part of the residential neighborhood fabric in Milbury. So we want to identify what these are, identify the characteristics and features, and understand what those are for each style in Milbury, and work that into the standards, so that if a home is demonstrative of a particular architectural style, then any modifications it undergoes, maintain that. And the style can, that work on the home maintains the integrity of that style, and that, to the extent that, and we'll talk about it, to the extent that new homes, new construction in the neighborhood also exhibits that style, we'll work that into the standards. So, we've identified three here that we've heard from the community. And we've identified particular elements that are typically the characteristic features of those homes. Now, not every home will be sort of a verified ranch or Spanish Mission or mid-century style. A lot of the homes would fall into the category of what we might call Milbury vernacular. And that's great. We also want to recognize that there are some that sort of have an architectural style, capital A, capital S, and identify what those features are. So we've pointed that out here for ranch. We see a lot of this in the hilly areas of the city. Let's move on to the next slide. Spanish Missions, that we see some, we see some older homes with tile roofs, with arched windows, doorways, with wrought iron grills and balconies, and we want to acknowledge that and work that into the standards. And we see a lot of, we see some Iclers on the next slide. We see some mid-century modern homes that, they look different, but a lot of times they're specific, they're features that are consistent among them. So we want to identify that and acknowledge that in the standards. There are other architectural styles. We're open to hearing about those as well. Let's move on to the next slide. Book one, we'll also talk about, we'll also address ADUs. And the palette of elements that we'll be looking at specifically for ADUs is a little limited, more limited, but we will definitely be looking at entrances. We're looking at privacy and visibility. Some of those standards might be different from primary structures. Style, integrity of style, and also with respect to the primary unit is important to think about, especially if the ADU is visible from the right of way. And then the site design, the open space between units, if it's a detached unit, how much open space is important to preserve, and make sure that shared open space is designed in a way that's consistent with the standards that you would apply to the areas that are visible from the right of way. Next slide. So I'll go through this a little bit more quickly. Book two is multifamily and mixed-use design. A lot of the same elements, but at a larger scale. And so let's move to the next slide. So we'll be looking at massing and scale. Upper-story step backs are important along, for large buildings and along major rights of way. Looking at, look at building articulation for different scales of buildings. We might, typically, we'd have certain articulation standards for buildings up to, say, 50 feet in width, and different articulation standards for larger buildings, roof form as well, how much variation is important to preserve for larger buildings. And design as well. Parking location and orientation and visibility is essential for, parking is central of any building, right? And for the design standards, we'll make sure that we address the visibility and how it impacts overall building design and materials and colors. Let's move on now. And site design as well. Open space, shared open space, circulation, moving through a site, through a block, landscaping. And then we'll look also at each unit, accessibility, appliances. The extent that the community is interested in energy efficiency, we'll work that into the standards. Next slide. Okay, the amendments to the code related to the need for ministerial review, removing the discretionary review. So on this slide, we have a quick summary of the existing procedures. We show the discretionary staff design review and the PC design review. These are in your code. The recommendations going forward are shown on the next slide. So we'll add a review, which is staff review and action that's ministerial. And then, which projects go to which review changes over here on the right. We see that all residential projects that comply with the applicable development standards that are in the code and design standards that are in the booklets, which will be incorporated by reference in the code, go through staff review that's ministerial. Single-family, duplex, and triplex projects that don't comply, go to a discretionary staff-level design review. And the planning commission sees multifamily projects that don't comply. That is to say, we identify the standards that we want to see. If you comply with all these standards, you go through ministerial review. If your design is more out of the box and you want to try something different, fine, you go through the old channel, the existing channels of planning commission review, or just staff design review.
I can stop.
Moving on.
I'm going to stop you there for a second. So, what I'm hearing is if it fits into the boxes that you try to build, ministerial, staff action, stay on, move on, right? If it doesn't fit into the boxes that you try to build, then the staff has a design review which is discretionary? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, it's the same as existing process that you have.
Which, is that a public hearing, or is it not? Is it, I'm trying to understand what that means.
It would be better for, since it's existing process, it would be better if staff were to describe that process. to describe that process.
So it's a second level staff review, is that what this is about, Mr. Monna?
The existing process is for second-story additions greater than 500 square feet goes to the planning commission for review.
Right.
And second-story additions less than 500 square feet would be at staff level. That's the existing process. If the project meets all, if it's a single-family house and it meets all the objective standards, it would be ministerial review, staff level, stamp, move on. If it does not, then we would look at what the project is and whether it is qualified for planning commission review. So if it's the second-story addition greater than 500 square feet, then we would send that to the planning commission. If not, if it's less than that, then it would be discretionary at staff level. That would be the existing process.
But the proposed applicability?
Mr. Ray, I think 500 square feet is the trigger, so 500 square feet or less discretionary staff review, no public hearing, greater than 500 square feet kicks.
Planning commission.
Commission review and public hearing process.
So it's, so it's the, so it depends on the size of the addition, whether or not it goes over 500.
Correct.
Second floor or higher to a single-family. Okay. All right. I want to let you finish, consultant, I want to let you finish that. And then what about this multifamily project that do not comply with applicable standard? That goes, automatically goes to the planning commission? Okay, I'm just a little confused. So basically, single-family home and duplexes and triplexes that do not comply will go to a staff design reviews first and see if we can work it out there, basically. And if it doesn't, then it goes on planning commission anyway. Is that what the proposal is, or is it in at the staff level review?
It would be either or, depending on the size of the project. I'll give you an example. So a single-family house that is being demolished completely and is being brand-new, so brand-new, so demo and rebuild.
So new construction.
New construction. Currently, that house has to go to the planning commission.
Yes.
If it meets all the, the new proposal, if it meets all the objective standards, that would be at staff level, because it meets it all.
Correct.
If it does not meet the objective standards, the old process would be, go to the planning commission, so it'd follow that same process.
So the old process, it goes up to planning commission regardless?
If it does not meet the objective design standards.
So that's the new process you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so the new process is if it fits within the design standard, objective design standards, staff level approval. If it does not meet the objective design standard, then it goes on to planning commission?
Yes.
And that's for?
For new homes and second-story additions greater than 500 square feet.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, and what about multifamily?
Multifamily, the same. If it is, if it meets the objective design standards, it would be a ministerial review. If it does not, then it will be planning commission review.
Okay, so for example, that 1301 Broadway project we were talking about before, potentially under these recommendations, that would not have gone to planning commission if it would have gotten staff's approval?
If it fits into all the criterias for objective design.
If it meets, we, right, so we're developing the objective design standards, and if we receive a project that meets all those objective design standards, say here's to meet the massing standards, you have to break in the building facade every 20 feet or whatever that's.
Roof line, the articulations of the windows.
Exactly. The developer can say, okay, I'll do that because I want ministerial review, does it, staff level approved. He says, well, you know what, really want something different, then it would be a discretionary review with the planning commission, because it's a deviation from the objective standard the city has applied.
So if it, so what I'm hearing is if it does not meet the objective design standard, it doesn't mean denial, it means you need to go through the discretionary process to see if you can get an approval.
Correct. Which would be the same process that we have currently. So 1301 Broadway was reviewed by the planning commission, planning commission approved the project. It doesn't mean that you can't do it, it just means that the planning commission will review the request and say, okay, this meets the intent of our design review.
But, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so 1301 Broadway, that is a good example of new state housing law that takes away the discretionary review of the local jurisdiction. So under the SB 50 or SB 330 state housing law, they could basically do whatever they want. The power, there is no local control anymore. So the state legislature said, if municipalities adopt objective standards, that is where you can have the local control and review, that's why this is so important. So what this is, is that if they meet the objective standards, reduce the red tape, very efficient, streamline approval. If a developer wants to do something different outside of the box and there's discretion, then that kicks in the planning commission public hearing process. And then, so this is a shift because of new state law that takes away the local control. This is the element of state law that allows us to have local control within the built environment. So the game has changed pretty significantly in terms of the review. And so what we're trying to do is follow state law, objective design criteria, you do that, you're going to fly through our process, which you try to do anyway, but when it comes into discretion, I get it, there's sometimes it gets stuck in the, I don't want to say red tape, it gets stuck in the back and forth, right? Planner, community, you know, we want this, developer saying, I want to build this, it takes that away. Unless, as Roscoe said, they want to do something different, then that due process is open for that public hearing and design review at the planning commission.
Yeah, I would also add to that, if I may, then the project can be appealed, right? So that process is still in place and hasn't changed.
Right, yeah.
Right. And I did have, I mean, I provided a very brief summary of SB 330, it does a lot, but part of what it does, just adding on to what the city manager has said, it is about reducing, it's streamlining, reducing the red tape. Part of the requirement for this ministerial review is just to get it through fast. It's also, SB 330 also limits the number of meetings that you can, that a project can go through.
The one in five, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can add one more thing to that, some of the feedback that we received from the design community is they don't know what a city wants, Millbrae or other municipalities. This provides the tool and the toolbox for the designer when they're working with their client to say, oh, okay, here's what the city of Millbrae design requirements are. And it's a tool that will help them facilitate putting pencil to paper. And then that will provide efficiency and streamlining of the process in and of itself.
And assurance to the applicant that they're all subject to the same standards.
I want to make sure we give you opportunity to finish your presentation, but I just wanted to bring about the, sort of, the objective and what I like to see done in terms of what this new policy provides, is a faster and more clear process for applicant to get their permits. One of our greatest challenge that I keep hearing from the constituencies or prospective constituency who wants to come in, because they bought, you know, a home that was built in the 40s and the 60s and they wanted to remodel it because they have a growing family, for example, is how can they obtain a permit faster and more definitively so that they can move in quicker? And one of the greatest barrier to having new community members moving in is the permit process. So, you know, what I will say is that as we try to craft out this box, you know, which is what the objective design standard is, I think there needs to be enough flexibility in there so that we can be effective in allowing these prospective new homeowners to move in, to obtain their permit faster, to get their construction and remodel done faster, because oftentimes nowadays, as expensive housing as they are today, a lot of multi-generation living, you know, grandparents with grandkids, so on and so forth. So there tends to be a greater needs of these updated home with bigger sizes so that, for lack of a better word, you can fit more people in a single box. That's important, and we're seeing more of it in order to, homeowners to even pencil out in moving into a neighborhood that is as great as ours, but yet they're still trying to look for that affordability. What used to be affordable to a family of two or three now can only be affordable to a family of five maybe, with more than two working adults. So just want to put things in perspective as to what this objective design standard needs to achieve. You know, we're here to make sure people have an easier pathway to success, not the other way around. I just want to bring about that.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly right, and that's exactly what this will do. Also, I don't know if you picked it up, but there was a slide that showed, you know, the building facade, and we have something in our code, and I think this comes from the, probably the early 80s, when every planning department thought, oh, it's great to take a second story and step it back, right, on a remodel. Or we were pointing out that that doesn't make sense, right, given the various architectural styles within the community. And so I think this does provide flexibility within, even though they're objective design criteria, to work within the form of the home, where if somebody has a house and they want to either add on a second story or expand a second story, our code right now says, hey, you can't do that, you have to, you know, you have to have this minimum setback on your second. And it just, it doesn't make any sense. So I think that that's a great example of what you bring up, that this provides flexibility or fluid within the desires of the homeowner and their designer, but we still have these objective design standards that are important to the community to maintain neighborhood character and the things that we have found are important to the community during the community outreach session. And of course, streamline the process, which is absolutely critical.
City Manager Williams, I just want to second your comment. I've personally seen how those setbacks on second stories can affect the pitch line of a roof where it'll create flat spots. I've also seen it affect the front fascia of the building where people have lost windows in order to put in closets. So I wholeheartedly agree that there needs to be flexibility, but I want to err on the caution of not being so flexible as to not having a setback at all on a second story, because one of the things that that could cause is the appearance of homes looking like big boxes rather than having that layered cake look of a setback on the second story. So I wholeheartedly believe there needs to be some flexibility, but not so loose that we lose control there.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I think if we can go back, Eduardo, there was a great rendering of.
I think, one more? Is this it?
Yes, this one, this one right here. So Councilmember Nolte, these are four different architectural standards that achieve the articulation that you mentioned, but it also respects the integrity of the original home, right? And so there are some times that, like on the top left, okay, if they, if that particular homeowner wants to come in and remodel, I, at least in my professional judgment, there's no reason why we have to require that home and that style to meet a second-story setback versus a home on the right or the bottom left. The bottom-right home is a brand-new home, modern style, and as a presenter said, meets the current requirement, right, of the second-story setback, which, this infill home, this is on Sequoia, this is actually the property that the city sold, the right field of the Mills baseball field. We sold that property to help finance the recreation center. The home turned out beautiful, meets the criteria. So this is, you know, example of what we're trying to fit within the character of the existing home and not require something, not trying to, I mean, the proverbial square peg and round hole. But your point is absolutely well-taken, and I think that also confirms what we heard from the community when we reached out to them in the survey and the community meetings
Hey.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. House is beautiful. I have a question. Does the house have crawl space? Crawl space?
So crawl space within the, within the home?
The new house, yes.
We do not require crawl space in the home. There's a building code requirement, but I just don't know, I don't know what that building code requirement is for crawl space.
Oh, okay.
And I know that the definition of crawl space is minimum of two and a half feet up to.
Eighteen inches, I believe is eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches up to, I think it would be six and a half feet, because six and a half feet then becomes a story as defined by the building code. So we don't require it?
Okay. Yeah, crawl space is very convenient for long run when you want to do something. Also, how about the solar panel? Do you have a solar panel?
Yeah, we do have draft standards for visibility of solar panels, sort of blending in with the roof, or if they're flat, there are standards that limit the, sort of, the visibility. And we didn't put everything in this slide show, but yes, yes, that falls in the section on building design and screening. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't mean to speak out of turn, but I think there were a few more slides, and it might be good to go through the end of that. I think there were only a couple of. Okay, so the next slide. Right, this just, okay, so this slide just adds that ministerial review. The finding is basically, for that ministerial review, the finding is, does the project comply with all applicable standards? And for the discretionary review, whether it's staff or PC, the findings are the same, the same as the findings that you have right now. That may have been obvious, but I wanted to present the slide anyway. The next slide is, that's it, okay.
Okay, all right. Those who wish to ask a question, let me know. Councilmember Nguyen, it's helpful to have a hand raised, thank you.
Yeah, so the, I saw information on ADU, but I didn't see a lot of details on design standards. I believe in California, there's a rule, right, for three feet behind a fence. Does your design objectives cover like, you know, nuisance noise that may occur from that?
Yeah, I think it's, so these standards, the design standards don't, won't conflict with, like, the state's ADU standards, which are really about setback and height. We're not stepping on their toes at all. It's really about the design of the structure and what, what standards we want to introduce to, to address privacy issues, to address the design of the required setbacks, the space between the homes, you know, the, the design of the, of the unit, whether it's detached or attached or blah blah, the design with respect to the primary unit, an entry feature, you know, it may be important, it sounds to the, like, it is important to the community that there's an engaging entry, standards that make sure that the ADU doesn't kind of occupy the same spa, or the entry area doesn't occupy the same space as trash receptacle area, pickup. So those are the kinds of standards. Yeah, we don't get in the way of the standards that come from the state. Yeah, we don't get in the way of the standards that come from the state.
I attended one of your design meetings like way in the past, and this came up where we were talking about noise and potential mitigations for noise that could eventually work its way into the design standard. One is like placement of the windows, what you allow for sliding windows, like, has that been considered?
Yeah. Typically, noise, like, visibility is addressed in development standards. Noise typically isn't. It's sort of a, like a building code issue rather than a zoning issue. It's something we can give some more thought to.
Again, that noise is a performance standard, and it's regulated elsewhere in your municipal law. Certainly, privacy, location of windows relative to existing buildings is germane and will be included in the objective design. Landscaping requirements also can and will be included in the objective design. But noise is a performance standard that's addressed elsewhere in your municipal law. But taking those other factors into consideration, address the concern. It's really a privacy question.
No, understood. I get that there's a potential crossover, a gray area, but at the same time, it does have, the design standards does have an effect since ADUs can be pretty close. I can attest to my property line with the fences. If somebody builds an ADU, they're pretty much in the earshot away from my house, and that can have an effect on noise, right?
Yeah, so there's certain things that, like, the state won't require. Let's say you have an existing garage with no setback, zero lot line, right? Because it's alley-loaded or wherever the existing was. Maybe it was allowed to have a garage with no setback in a previous code. State law says if an applicant wants to do a conversion, you can't require that setback change. So it's important to remember with all these, whether the questions about what's the pathway for discretionary review versus ministerial or about ADUs, that the goal of the recommendations that the consultant is preparing staff for your eventual adoption, to bring you in line with state requirements, to make sure that you're compliant, also as well as any compliance with any other obligations you may have made through your housing element. But it's, I think, a couple of things, this process, which is modernizing your standards to conform to state requirements. And the requirements are a little bit different for ADUs than they are for the primary units, and they're a little bit different with a multifamily than a single family. In fact, including ADUs, because now multifamily ADUs as well. And again, that's a state requirement. We can do about that except for to make recommendations for you to have standards that can guide that process.
I agree. I think it's more like what we can control, right? So like, for example, like, if we can control where the placement of the window is, for example, that can mitigate some of the noise. Also, is kind of where else to point out?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I think window and door placement and fence and hedge placement and height can and should be in the code. If we're talking about noiseproofing measures beyond, I think we sort of get into the territory of, that's not very flexible. It's making projects less feasible and less flexible for applicants, and we would avoid that.
But I would add, go ahead.
There's one danger here, and mostly my role within LWC is interpreting and negotiating with HCD. You have to make sure that your objective standards are not creating constraints for the production of housing. I'm not saying a noise one necessarily would, but you could start to move in that direction. Where the state might say, yeah, you've added these objective standards and provided a ministerial path, but the bar is so high, you've created a new constraint. There's always going to be a balancing act. This is, you've gone through the housing element process, so you know. It's not just with that, unfortunately, HCD doesn't go away once you get your housing element certified. Wish that were true, but we're going to also have to be cognizant to whatever standards that get eventually adopted do not create new constraints for the production of housing.
And a greater question to that is, as we look to adopt new objective design standard, that they are truly objective?
Hundred percent. If they're not objective, first of all, we wouldn't make a recommendation for you to do that. But you would, you have to have a ministerial path for housing applications that meet objective standards, new objectives. And this process will create that. But taking the time, which, and taking community input and taking the time, take your input as the council, staff input, and again, tailoring it to the needs of the community, gives you an opportunity to say what's important, to put those standards in there. Otherwise, you lose any control. This is your opportunity.
And I would just add to, I think Councilmember Nguyen brings up a very good point with ADUs, right? ADUs, they're, the objective is good, right? At housing, second unit, income, you know, whatever the individual. However, I just believe that it went too far because the setback for an ADU is only five feet in the rear yard and four feet on the side yard. And so this is where, you know, professional planning staff with the adoption of these can work with the applicant and the surrounding neighbors to use some discretion, because we're never going to be able to, you cannot legislate good design, as they say. But this is where I think professional planning staff will still play a key role, to your point, if there's an ADU, placement of the windows, double pane windows, you know, noise, and being good neighbors, you know, to each other. So there's still very much a vital role for planning in that. Now, that doesn't mean that it's discretionary, that if they don't follow planning, they kick it up to Planning Commission. This is just professional guidance with the property owners that try to be good neighbors. So I think that that will still apply. But not hold up the red tape, Mr. Mayor, we won't go too far with it.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, Councilmember Nguyen? Something a moment ago?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think I agree with pretty much all of the input that the public has given over the past year. And I like many of the, you know, images that you've chosen and design guidelines presented here. I did have one question, because you kind of went quickly over the multifamily portion. And do you foresee different design guidelines for lower density versus like higher density multifamily buildings? I didn't really see much of that.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, first, we should point out that whereas the city, there really are none, or almost none, no design standards for the single-family duplex neighborhoods. The areas that support, most of the areas that support multifamily and mixed use have specific plans in place that include a lot of design standards. So we're not starting from scratch there. We have a lot of design standards that address buildings of different scale and some transition standards. So I want to say there's less work to do there, but we're starting from something there. And yes, absolutely. The standards that apply to a four-unit apartment building would be different from those of a 200-unit
Right.
building that takes up a whole block. And a lot of the standards, the development standards and the design standards that you already have in place do, to some extent, address that, and we will work from that.
Okay, thank you. I'm just still just kind of trying to get my head around the, you know, really dramatically reducing the role of the Planning Commission in all of this, particularly for, I mean, I don't think they have to review every second-story addition or, you know, single-family rebuild or whatever. But in terms of the larger projects, I think there is still a benefit having a public hearing and being able to take input from the public, even if, you know, the role is very much limited as to what they can or can't do. You know, I think as much as we try to make this objective, there's probably still some kind of small areas where two people can respectfully disagree about whether, you know, a project complies with the requirements or not. So probably need a little bit of time to contemplate that. But thank you very much for the presentation.
Any other council members before I take public comments? Okay, let's take some public comment. City Clerk, I believe we have a hand raised from Ann Schneider.
Yes, we do, Mayor. Ann Schneider, please accept the mute.
Thank you. Ann Schneider, Palmer Avenue, Millbrae, dips the lower part of the Highlands neighborhood. As a former elected, I did not get to go to most of the meetings that helped create this. So yay, but here are my comments, if I can get them in two minutes and 45 seconds. One, the pictures used do not represent all of the neighborhoods. For example, I don't see anything that I would consider the most typical bayside manor, the bungalow homes that are very 1940s post-war or pre-war. And there should be better photos in these representing each of the specific neighborhoods. Also, a lot of the photographs that you used have the front yards, and I grew up here, so I've been here since 1967, where people have simply rocked in their front yards. And that is not the intent, that is not going to make for climate resiliency, for water absorption, carbon fixing, and all that kind of stuff. So I'm hoping when you do landscape, you go back and you look at those photos that you've used and just see how many bad front yards you used in all of those examples. In terms of your description of Highlands, Highlands is a strip that has the older Spanish down below, and I think you called them midcenturies or mid-century moderns above. I consider the upper part more eclectic. But even here in Lower Highlands, we have the houses built by Schultz, the Spanish houses, some Tudors, some mixed, I don't know what style to call them. And then there were leftover lots that were infilled in the 50s with frankly, a very bland, ugly mid-century. So if you're doing design guidelines for the Lower Highlands neighborhood, for example, I have a really horrible house next door to me. It's a ranch-style house, it's falling apart. The owner wanted to remodel, gave up, it's got great tenants in it. But if that were to be torn down and rebuilt, would it be rebuilt in Spanish Tudor? Or would it be rebuilt in mid-century modern? The other thing that I'm hoping you will include is the fact that our historic neighborhood here in Highland, we have very special 1920s, 1930s stucco work. And what has happened, and the best example of how not to do it is 421 Taylor Boulevard that took off the arches, took off the stucco, took out the front yard, and basically filled everything in with rocks and cement and a little bit of grass, and put up a flat, modern stucco. It is the worst remodeling job in the Highlands neighborhood. And yet that stucco work is happening all over. In terms of noise, I think Councilmember Nguyen brought up a good thing about ADUs, but we are in a heavily noise congested area. And I do believe that there are design guidelines for airport, freeway, and train, and El Camino noise that should be included. And there are roof guidelines now for climate resilience.
Thank you very much for the comment. I believe we have additional town hall meetings, is that correct? Outreach meeting, is that correct? Monica?
The next community meeting is a community open house on the public review draft.
Community open house, okay. And then that's when, I'm sorry?
That'll be, so we'll be submitting the admin draft in about a month. Staff will review that, will receive comments from staff, and then we'll release a public review draft for the community and all decisions to review.
Okay, so I just want to assure the public that there's more opportunity to chime in on this objective design standard. This is not done. We're just, this is sort of a checkpoint or milestone in terms of the entire process. There's more to come, and more public input will be evaluated and be part of this continued process. So I want to thank the speaker for that. So to that end, and I think, you know, the speaker brought up a good point about some of the other style of home that we can incorporate. You know, there's certainly some of the more historic ones, you know, the Tudor that was mentioned, the Spanish, and then there's also some of the newer ones that can also be included, some of the modern ones that has been put in in the last few years as well. Because I believe that design, the design of a home, you know, should reflect the time at which the design was done, based on the time it was done. You know, back in the days when we were doing Victorians, 120 years ago, you see a lot of Victorians everywhere, and Awadians everywhere, because that was the Victorian time. When the ranch style became popular after the, you know, after the war, a lot of ranch-style homes go up. And that was the time that sort of signify, you know, the style of the homes and aside the time at which they were built. We're now in a modern time, you know, 2025. So it's natural that we have some moderns homes being built in certain neighborhoods as well. So I think that should also be a part of the consideration as we move forward, because we see a lot more flat roofs coming up as we look at how to build better homes and more homes within those objective design standards like, you know, the plate height, for example, the roof height, for example, how people can take advantage of that and be able to get more roof space and put more solar panels up, and so on and so forth. So flat roofs become pretty popular from, you know, from a standpoint of how to, you know, put more buildings within the same height limit. So there are all these newer designs that you can also incorporate as part of your entire package as we continue to move forward on this process. So I commend you for doing all the work that you have done so far, and there is more to come, based on the feedback that you received tonight and more feedback you will continue to receive in the upcoming, you know, public engagement. Any other comment from this council? Questions? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thank you, Mayor Fong. Just want to thank all the folks in the community, consultants as well, for all the hard work, especially our staff, for all the hard work that went into the report and being able to provide us with some of the feedback from the public. Thank you.
Okay, I believe this is an action item. We've taken public comments. I think we need to accept this report, is that correct, City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this is a study session, and as we...
This is action item, so...
Well, we notified for action just in case there's anything. So, you know, with the consensus that we're on the right track, and really, it's just if the council had a specific item that you wanted to direct us on, that's why we do it for actions, we don't box the city council in. So if there is no specific action, the action then is just to make a motion to note, receive, and file the report.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to receive the file and command the staff and the consultant for the progress we've made so far. Do we have a second?
Second that.
We have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. If there's no further comment, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hollibaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
Item number 12, pass 5050.
Thank you so much. All right, so that brings us to council comment. Who would like to volunteer? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thanks, Mayor Fong. Just want to thank the public for coming out today. We had speakers from various different segments of our community. Really appreciate all the comments that were made, definitely digesting all of them, and more to come in the future. So thank you for your participation and collaboration. It's what helps guide us folks up here in these council seats. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Not to put words in Councilmember Riley's mouth, but just a reminder of her listening session on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the recreation center.
Council comment can also be used for marketing purposes.
I want to say thank you so much for all of... I want to say thank you so much for all of you who is present tonight and a happy New Year towards the last day and a happy early Valentine's Day to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, just very quickly, I attended the library and Joint Powers Authority meeting last week. We approved the purchase of a new book mobile, which is an important tool for attending, for participating in public events and also for serving some of the more remote parts of the county such as Pescadero, the Coast Side, La Honda, areas like that, that don't have a physical location. And then also the Millbrae Community Enhancement Committee had a meeting last week and discussed an upcoming project idea that they have along the spur trail between Taylor and Hillcrest to put in kind of a sort of a memorial type wall where people could buy tiles as a donation to honor loved ones, not necessarily all, not necessarily like a graveyard type of thing, a memory memorial for the living as well as as the deceased. And also a couple of like exercise type equipment on either end of the trail. I think they're planning to bring that to an upcoming council meeting for in the next couple of months to put it on our radar and see if this is something we can cost out and potentially include in the budget in the upcoming year. That's all, thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Councilmember Nguyen?
Some initial stages of getting on to these committees and subcommittees, and the only one I've gotten response from is the Millbrae Community Television Liaison, which I hope to attend their event soon. So nothing other than that going on right now for committee updates.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Nguyen. So I just wanted to thank all the community member who came out last past weekend to the Marina Vista Park. We had a really, really good turnout that day. I also want to thank our representative on the legislature, both Senator Becker and also Assemblymember Papen for helping us to secure over $300,000 of funding to getting this park done. And then coupled along with over a million dollars of our own contributions, I mean, we continue to make record investment in the east side of El Camino Real and improving their parks, improving their storm drains, improving all the fundamental facilities and all the infrastructure to ensure the safety of those neighborhoods and the quality of lives on the east side residence, along with everybody else in City Millbrae as well. It's just our commitment to making record investment in the east side. I think that's just want to make sure everybody is on the same page of that. And I'm also very proud of the staff of, you know, getting it done on time, on budget, which is excellent. Thank you so much, city manager, and also, you know, Park and Rec and DBW and everybody else is part of that process. You know, as people have paid attention to what's going on in Washington, there is a lot of changes every day, to say the least, and a lot of immigrant communities are a little scary of what's going to happen to them. And the city of Millbrae is, you know, over 40% of our populations are first generation immigrant. And so to that end, I'm proud to announce that the County San Mateo and also the Millbrae Library is partnering to doing a workshop to explain immigrant rights on February 18th at the Millbrae Library at 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that's for English and Mandarin, and also between 6:00 to 7:00 will be in Cantonese, having these multilingual sessions to explain to our immigrant community what your rights are because you are protected under the Constitution, especially the 14th Amendment on equal protection. It's extremely important, and we're a country founded on immigrants and we're, we value everybody in our community. So so I just want to bring about, you know, this partnership that's happening in City Millbrae, and I'm very glad to see that this is coming forward as we continue to support everyone in the city of Millbrae, including those who are first generation immigrant. And nobody should live in fear. So I think that's extremely an important aspect that our city can bring to our residents. So to that end, thank you so much. 10:30 tonight, and I'd like to close this meeting at 10:31 p.m. Thank you all.